Okay, it is, it is. Looks like five, it's like seventy-four, maybe seventy-seven, about seventy. Those were gonna... Watching each other pump and stuff on Saturday mornings. That was a joke. A bad one. That's pretty stupid.
Oh, no, no.
So, just quickly, I first came to be on my right hall, because that's a major expense. Something for the kids. What's going on with the couple teachers?
What about them?
I heard they're sitting in a box.
We'll give them kids tomorrow at lunch.
Just kidding, the night?
Yep. Kids have to sign the pledge.
And what's happening with the ones who go to middle school kids?
Soldering.
Did you get him though?
Who do you think changed that stuff? You had a few, very few. Seen three or four?
I know, I lost your... I lost your voice.
You didn't, you didn't.
I owe ya.
She owes me.
But I couldn't get out.
I'm just saying, I don't know. And you're just lucky that farming and rain is more important than you.
Say it again.
You are lucky that farming and rain is more important than you.
Gotcha.
Kabuya.
Is there a lot of people?
Uh, I would say... Especially of course, uh, the thing, water showed up in Max, so we were well represented. So, and then, you know, the problem of anything to handle it.
Make it drop.
It wasn't usual.
I saw that online.
Driscoll, y'all?
Driscoll?
Oh, no.
Oh, you wanted Driscoll?
Yeah, but see, Dick Lewin's all this stuff, but he didn't really call him.
Forget it.
He left his children. Except saying to me at the last minute, "Oh, I can't get Stan Rosen." How can a human being not get Stan Rosen?
How was dealing with MCAK?
That ain't me. No, so, uh...
How much it was?
Yeah, it was a very, it was only about fifteen minutes that we speak. And then, you know, we had, of course, Steve, who can always...
Of course. All right, so I owe you a cup of coffee.
But, you know what? Yeah.
She'll look up to?
I don't think...
I'll volunteer.
You owe us a dinner. But you know what? I really think they would be better if you wanted to do that again, to do it at, like, West Virginia State University.
Yes.
Do you want to try something? I know all the superdudes that would come.
Sure.
Way out there, you know what they say, two hours drive to human... Because it comes to the moon and drive fifty-six. You know, what's hard is hell.
And you get people leaving from... You come this way.
Absolutely, because it's so much easier. I would have been...
Holy cross, holy cross.
Oh, nice idea.
What's the state?
Well, here, right here are...
I can take care of what's the state, he can take care of the cross.
At...
Oh, what? Take a barracuda and I get a room? When did this happen? I just signed in a second.
Andrew got into me about, what, five forty?
How about? Andrew, from home you use this food?
Uh, no, from anywhere inside the district, any school, any building.
But, but if you're in home?
Yep.
You just go same way?
Same way you did. So sad, just...
Wifi.
Good wifi, yeah, great.
Anybody else need wifi time here, or are we good?
Andrew.
Andrew.
Okay. Thanks, Andrew. I got a case. They're not being planned on an infusion actually. All right, let's call the meeting order. Can I have a motion on approval of minutes in the second?
I'm moved.
Comments, questions, corrections? Anything? Seeing none, all in favor? Raise your hands, please. Posed, none, intentions? Two? So... Administrator, you know, administrative report?
Um, most of my information will be covered later on in the agenda, but just a kudos to our school bus drivers. Uh, we've had several very slippery mornings, and even though I delayed, there were some interesting driving. And I would say that we safely, had our kids safely here on time on every one of those very difficult drives. And I really commend Stacy Scarry, who works very closely with them, and also the highway people in the towns, because it has not been a good morning for them, and they have worked really hard to allow our two-hour delays to occur. And we did have a lot of trees and branches down on the last storm, and it was impossible to run the routes. I turned buses around and so forth, and some of the routes, so we, you know, called off school for the day. So, for those of you who were sitting home saying, "What's she doing that for?", um, I was working with the highway people on that particular call. Uh, I had ridden the roads, but none with, um, down trees. So, I was ready to go with the two-hour delay and to keep it that way, but I'm after some calls with our, with our highway folks. It was really not a prudent decision. So, I, I do want to extend McCarthy, and he works very closely with us, he does communicate with me. And if he's concerned about a route, uh, with, or a turnaround that is icy and so forth, and so we've worked very hard to try to take care of that. I do want to make a note for the, um, student advisory committee who was here the other day and talked a little bit about, you know, last month, and talked about, um, McKennick Street, uh, coming into Barry. Uh, it's a, it's a very steep hill and generally well-salted. We do have a, a water problem on that hill. Every morning it is, there's a, there's a real, you know, piece of glare there. And I will be asking the principal to ask students if they're concerned about that. They should take a right at the bottom on sixty-two, and they should go up School Street where there is not that problem. We are unable to salt it sufficiently to ensure that it won't blaze over. Uh, it is glazed, and there's a big daycare bus stop there where lots and lots of kids are ch-ch-ch, with a lot of parents helping and assisting, but, um, on black ice, uh, even if it's seven in the morning or eight in the morning, it's, it's really pretty difficult. So, if I could ask the principals to redirect staff, if they're concerned, both staff and students, to go up School Street and, you know, just go around the very large circle and very common, and, um, so on. So, that, otherwise, I, everything else I have is covered later on in the agenda.
Assistance, Kevin?
I just have two items, Mr. Chairman. Um, in your packet, there are, um, professional development overview, um, documents that, uh, give you information about the two, uh, the last two professional development days that we have created. One was just this week. As you can see, uh, we did, on the seventeenth of January, we did have a district-wide, um, training for all, um, for all stu- teachers and administrators, um, presented by the Department of Education, um, Safe Schools Program. Um, and it was, it focused on, um, making sure that we were providing for the need for, um, LGBTQ students in our, in our school district. We've never hosted, uh, that type of train, a full faculty training for that. Um, and it was, it was very, very informative. The presenter was wonderful, she, um, volunteered to come back anytime I needed her to. She wanted, wanted to work with individual faculty members or, or individual, uh, faculties on issues of concern or questions that they had. Um, so that was very, uh, very informative for our faculty. And as you can see, um, all of the other, um, professional development activities that we, that we are engaging in are really very much goal-based. Our, our big goals this year, generally speaking, are increasing the rigor in, in all of our classrooms to make sure that we provide, um, the appropriate instruction, instructional support, so that our students are, um, able to meet those levels of rigor in our classrooms. So, any questions that you have on that, I'd be happy to answer them. In addition to that, um, I just wanted to give you an update on the MCAS testing that we're preparing for. Um, we, uh, the state has started to roll out some information to us on the upcoming testing. They had, they had, um, informed us that we would have sample tests, a practice test for our students in January. That date has been pushed back until February now, we're not sure exactly when that will, um, be available to us, but as soon as it is, we are planning to have our students take those practice tests in their, with their classroom teachers. And we are, we have been meeting the principals, and, um, Andrew and I have been meeting to make sure that the technology needs are set, that the scheduling, um, of the, of the MCAS testing sessions will be, um, our technology will be able to handle what the principals are hoping to, um, to schedule. Um, the, one of the main, um, limit, limiting factors at the school level, not only in the technology, but is the staffing that's available to handle the small groups that are necessary for students on 504 plans or IEP plans. Um, so, the testing window is two months long, it's almost the entire month of April and the entire month of May. Um, in some of our schools, twenty-one of those, uh, days will be used for, for MCAS testing. So, that's about sixty, over sixty percent of that, the, the time, not in all schools, but in our elementary schools especially, will be, will be used for MCAS testing. So, that, that's, that's a challenge for our administrators, because it takes a lot of administrative time to focus their time and attention with those students during their testing. Um, it's, it's a drain on our technology staff, because we need tech staff in those buildings to, to... And it also takes technology away from the other students in the building during that testing window. So, um, we have a schedule, we think we'll, we'll be all set to go, um, but it will, it will drain resources, um, through that, through that very long testing window that we have planned, so... I just wanted to update you with that, anything of... We're still waiting for more information from the state, where, um, principals and are sitting through some long webinars weekly from here, here on out, to make sure that they've got all the technical details down in terms of enrolling students and unenrolling students, and making sure all of the, um, accommodations that students need for the testing are in the system so that, um, student gets the correct test at the correct time in the correct location, um, so...
I think, would you talk a little bit about what accommodations are?
So, students who have, um, IEPs, special education students for, um, students with 504 plans, can take, sometimes take the test with, under different circumstances, based on what their individualized educational plan says. Sometimes they're, um, they take, they test in small groups. Uh, sometimes they test with a familiar test administrator, so they would, wouldn't put them with a teacher that they, that they didn't have on a regular basis in their classroom. Um, some students have what's called speech-to-text, um, accommodation, so they would have, um, that if there was a reading passage, it would be read to them over the computer, they would wear headphones. Um, so, those are the things, you know, there are, there are many, I think there are probably twenty-six or thirty different types of accommodations that students have. And those accommodations have actually changed with the new test, so there are some differences, um, as to, um, what we can do with students, what we can allow students to take the test with different types of accommodations, um, in MCAS. It's a little bit more liberal now, principals have a little bit more flexibility if they feel the student needs an accommodation, but the student is not on an IEP or doesn't have that particular accommodation in the IEP. There's a little more flexibility to allow that student that accommodation for the testing window, if the principal deems it necessary. It doesn't apply to all of the accommodations, but to some that will use, that previously were only allowed for students if it was in their individualized educational plan, so...
Thank you. Questions? Mark?
Hey, you touched on professional development. Any comments on the Collins Center summary that basically said professional development spending was a double the statewide average for this district? Like, and they quantify it, like, you know, basically it represents five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars higher than if it was at the state average. Any comments on that?
Yeah, Cheryl has information in her budget presentation. We did, we have done quite a bit of research to help all of you understand why we feel that now happens the way it is. Um, and so, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll defer to her, and we'll talk about it at that point.
Okay, anybody else? Already?
Uh, since our last meeting, the board's definitely had signed K-Ro warrant thirteen and fourteen. Fifteen is here, I think we require two more signatures tonight. And accounts payable, thirteen A and fourteen A have previously been signed, and fifteen, I mean, is here for signature as possible. I guess members will have to, after the meeting, to sign those, I appreciate it. Other than that, the other thing I have prior to talking about the budget is a request for a transfer from the current year's budget, and the technology director and I have gotten together over the last couple of days to present this transfer request, which hopefully will help on what Sheila's just talking about, the strain that we believe will happen with our technology resources that we get, get ready to, and preparing students to take online testing. Our E-rate reimbursement was approved and came in earlier this month, and the tech director has eighty-six thousand dollars plus or minus that's available to be moved from that technology telecommunications line, and we'd like to put it into classroom instructional technology. In addition, we have, um, less expense in unemployment than we had budgeted for. We were very lucky, and a number of our teachers who were laid off due to our reduction in force were able to get positions. Uh, so, we do have some money there, and I, I recommend that we move, um, oh, gosh, I didn't write down, break down the numbers. It's like, um, forty thousand dollars from that line. However, I did keep a little bit of money there, because the new rules of unemployment are, if you're still unemployed and you enroll in a course during that time, you can re-establish your benefit. So, I do have a little bit of money available there, because we still have some people that are collecting because they have not gotten another job. We also have two staff members whose FTE was reduced this school year, but they're able to collect the difference. So, we still have those on our bill as well. And the remainder of that is from our health insurance line, because we offered the staff a new opportunity for health insurance in a plan that we actually brought into play, uh, January of two thousand and sixteen, which is a deductible plan, which is the first plan that we've offered staff to take that has a deductible. And last January, we've only three staff members took that plan. So, we have a new health insurance broker. Our former broker passed away, and we kind of got this, uh, this broker, kind of like by default, because his company bought out a part of that business, and he came to us with a, with a very unique, um, proposal that I usually say, "Whoa, I don't like giving money away", but he did, uh, he did make it least thing palatable to me, that we take a look at this. And we got the insurance advisory committee together, and everyone thought it was a good idea. The district is actually paying a portion of employees' deductibles towards this plan, and we still save a considerable amount of money. And the catch-all there is, most people won't use the total of their deductible, because those, those services that you have to, are go towards a deductible are more than just going to the doctor and getting checked out or having a physical and those types of things. So, I do have money left over in our health insurance line. I think we have fifty-eight or sixty people, thirty-eight, thirty-eight or forty people that have now moved to that plan. So, there's some savings, savings there that we'd like to put into classroom instructional technology, and, you know, move the, the laptop cart that was here, um, to buy the laptop carts that are going to be used for the testing. So, I think someone has...
I can make a move.
...the motion here, with the numbers.
The motion, move to transfer eighty-six thousand, one hundred and six dollars and sixty cents from appropriation category to forty-four hundred networking and telecommunications due to E-rate reimbursement program. Hundred and nineteen thousand, ninety-three dollars and forty cents from appropriation category fifty-two hundred benefits due to reduction in unemployment and health insurance expense to appropriation category twenty-one hundred dash thirty-two hundred instructional support for the purchase of classroom instructional technology.
Motion, second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Seeing none? All in favor of the... Oh, it needs to...
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Deschamps?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sarabia? Mr. Fear? Mrs. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Leclair?
Yes.
Mr. Wigler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Pease?
Yes.
And Chairman Mulan?
Yes.
Other than that, then, just have budgets. Thank you.
Teacher advisory? I have nothing this evening. Okay. And student advisory?
So, basically, since the last time I was here, I had another state council meeting, and we got to... We had presenters come down, they got to talk to us about the new requirements for teachers and their curriculums. So, we got to all, all the students got to give their inputs, they gave us papers with the suggested changes, and we went through, we looked at each one, and gave our advice on wording and how we felt about each one. Then, we got to hear back again about the school climate and culture, on the question that will be going on the end of the MCAS. And she showed us some of, how different some of our views were, because we did it as a group, as the state council, and then each region did it too. So, she put up the different, she color-coded it, so you could see, based on each question, what groups approved it, which ones rejected it, and which ones changed it, as well as gives examples of some of the changes that were made, and to show how the wording was really able to help clarify for, when we assume students will be taking it. And I also got to take part in a discussion with Mr. Buchanan, who was working on civics and trying to implement it into schools, and he wanted student input on what, where we think there can be improvements with civics, where they, where we should start, whether it be elementary school, middle school, high school, what new requirements should be that would go into that, where some of the suggestions were to make it a required class that students need to take in order to graduate, and others talked about making it pass and fail, opposed to actually giving it a letter grade and weight, because for some schools that would influence GPAs and that sort of thing. And then, they also went over what we felt would be included in that. Some students do already have it at their schools, so they were able to give a lot of input on what their classes were like. And a lot of them were able to take current events and really discuss them out and get a better understanding of what's happening in the world around us. And so, in those ways, a lot of the students agreed that we need more civics. And so, they're currently working on trying to figure out ways to fit that in with the history curriculum and figuring out the best way to enforce that, as well as, like, for schools where it would only be a suggestion. So, in some ways, they're trying to figure out the best way not to pretty much shove it at the schools and tell them, "Figure it out", and trying to be very careful with being, understanding that not all the schools are in the same place to be able to do that, especially with charter schools and public schools being very different in some ways, and not everything is set up exactly the same. And so, that was kind of the conclusion of the meeting. It was a very, very long discussion, and we ran over as usual. And we also got to meet with our chairman on the Board of Education, the student chairman, and he gave us an update on the different discussions they've been having, as well as informing us of different aspects, like, there was a school in Boston that unfortunately was closed down, and was giving us an update on what was happening with that school and the repercussions of that, as well as finding out that the state placed Massachusetts tested differently, or tested alone against, in comparison to other countries, and we placed among the top in nearly all of them. I don't remember the exact numbers that he used, but I remember they were in top ten for most categories. I don't remember the exact numbers that he used, but I remember they were in top 10 for most categories. So that was the conclusion for the state. And then any questions before I go on to school? Then for school, this week we've had Project Purple Week where you sign the pledge and they will be giving out purple T-shirt, Project Purple T-shirts. And with the wristband, you're able to get into any sports event that COABIN is participating in for free. And it's kind of to show support and show your pledge to staying from alcohol and drugs and things like that. As well as tomorrow night, there will be a karaoke competition. And I'm sure that's going to be very interesting with some of the people that play to sing. And then as well as that, there will be Student Government Day coming up in March. And I, along with a fellow student, will be going to the State House to participate in that as they have in previous years.
Sounds like you've been busy. As to the aspect regarding the meeting, the state meeting, we don't, we don't teach civic, any civic, any standalone civics course.
No, we don't.
Do we, do any of our teachers really cover any specific aspects of civics? I mean, do they fold in some sort of?
It's folded into the U.S. History I course where they do constitutional history, Bill of Rights and some of that type of stuff. But in terms of local civics, there's, there's little to no local civics folded into the curriculum. And it is, it is a place where when we look at our curriculum and what's there, we don't have a course. And actually, you could speak to that too, Evan, in terms of being a social studies teacher.
Yeah, I would say it's, it's a need. You know, it's tough to just add courses, but when I was in high school, that was something we talked about a lot as a need when we met some social studies department, but it was just difficult to figure out where to put it in. A lot of schools don't seem to as well, which it amazes me that it's not mandated, but it's tough.
I think you used to. When I was at school, I thought it was mandated. It seemed like it was mandatory.
I got very lucky where I took AP U.S. History last year and I had Mr. Blonsky and he made it a point to really keep us up to date with what's going on in the world. And when he realized that some of us didn't understand the structure of government, he took a whole day apart and talked us through everything, explained the different laws and all of the requirements to that. And I felt like it really was helpful, helpful for a lot of us later on when you've got things like the election, because some of us are turning 18 now. And just to understand the politics that go around, not only the state, but also local, it just gives all a better understanding.
And on the, on the Project Purple, what is, you know, I know the outreach and some of the stuff that's going on in the communities, but what's the student temperature on that? I mean, do people, do students take this seriously or are they saying, oh yeah, purple, purple things put around the posts? That's nice.
There are quite a few students that have been taking it seriously and for, like today where the police, new police chief came in along with officers to talk to students about new drugs that are coming up and things to watch out for and reasons what? More education of why we shouldn't, opposed to just saying outright, you shouldn't do it. A lot of students feel like when we have some guest presenters come in, they push towards just don't do it. And they just keep shoving that at us instead of trying to explain to us why. So for some students, the education line, it really helps them say, oh, that's why we can't do it. And it's kind of something in the back of their minds when they think about doing it, they realize, oh, wait, that's what it was like for this person. And it makes them think twice. And so that discussion today was really helpful. Although I will say, I did hear students say that they would not be signing out of how their friends would treat them. I did hear a girl say that her friends were mocking it. And if she was to sign off on it, she'd be kind of the outcast in the group. So unfortunately, there's just people trying to continue to spread it even more. And every year it seems to get larger in terms of participation. Because I know when I first came up, it wasn't really a huge thing. And very few, many people were kind of unsure about it, but every year it grows. And seeing that more students around you are doing it, especially for the kids coming up from middle school to high school and even kids from elementary school into middle school, seeing that the older students are all embracing it, it makes it easy to accept and really take seriously how important it is for them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For the town of Hardwick, okay, the response to this propaganda, if you will, was very strong in my opinion. They, some of them didn't know what the hell it was about, but they inquired about it so that they're knowledgeable now. Even though the target audience may not be exactly narrowed to the youth, not only the youth have the problem with this, everybody has a problem. So it can reach everybody.
That's all I would say. It was about community awareness. Again, the point about not just saying, say no, but the understanding and the awareness and what the awareness can grow too. Because cause and effect, it's a cause and effect. So, and what it does to a community. So you're absolutely right. The awareness is there rather than just saying no. That's part of getting to the cognitive understanding of it because we're seeing the effects of their addictions. And it's hitting all walks of life. And again, I'm glad that this project has done, and I'm using your words, you're seeing a yearly increase of awareness. So I'm glad that you're reporting that out, that you see that from the students, your colleagues, your peers.
Anybody else have comments? Thank you very much for your report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to ask the superintendent that, I'm not saying create a course in civics, which we need, but maybe emphasize for the department head of social studies to include this so that somebody can have a list of cursory knowledge of it.
I know that certainly administratively, we discussed this and I think social studies would be very amenable to working with us to infiltrate this into our, into our other courses. But there's so much that the state has an expectation that we will cover in a certain amount of time. So I will lead to the principals and our social studies team a way in which maybe we can approach that because I do think it's a worthy goal and I thank you for your support and pushing that along. But to add, to drop in a course and then to try to schedule it in the midst of?
I'm not saying a course because I know that we're overloaded with courses as far as I'm concerned. But the thing about it in amongst those shards of the social studies people have, I'm sure that they can do it.
Well, I, I suspect that is true. And so I think we can report back at the next school committee meeting a possible plan after some discussion with social studies. And I don't leave you without of that, Sue. I think that this is something that certainly middle school can participate in and sort of interrupt in sort of scope and sequence way ensure that our kids get the information that they need to be, shall we say, very fine citizens.
I think even to a degree, even the elementaries can touch upon it. You don't have to go nuts over it still. Somehow they just touch upon it. It gives them a, just so they have a kind of a, you know, a working knowledge or the ability to discuss those, you know, some basic things. Okay, so we're going to shift now to subcommittee reports, see budget, discussion of preliminary fiscal year 18 questions.
Before Cheryl does a deep dive into the numbers and so forth, just some introductory remarks. In previous years, we have always tried to look at a needs budget to go through our standard to do a real scrub and say, what is it our kids really need to have access to in order to have what we would, you know, venture to guess is the best possible opportunity in elementary, middle and high school. And in doing so, we always say, well, you know, we should do more of this and a little of that. They should have this equipment or this particular tech program and so on and so forth. And we were asked this year by the school committee, not necessarily not to do that, but not to bring that information directly to you. And then this massive budget that is dumped on your table and then we spend the next two or three months taking it apart. And we certainly, that was a different perspective for us and a different struggle. But we really needed to at least be, begin to, you know, we looked at the needs. And then we have, we have done our absolute best to put together a budget that would allow us to continue to provide a very, as equivalent, an educational program equivalent next year to what we're currently doing. Monitoring our class sizes, worrying a little bit about what's going to happen with our kindergarten class sizes because that's always a little bit of a guess. We do have opportunities for enrollments and signups in March. But oftentimes, parents come with their children during the summer and enroll them in kindergarten. And so that's always a little bit difficult to predict those class sizes. We have some class sizes, one over in Ocam right now that's 31 children, a set of twins moved in, difficult for us in grade five. We know that, I, I know that Tricia is trying to work with some special education expansion there, I think, to help support that area. And so she and I have not had a chance to meet on that, but she's emailed me about her concerns. We're concerned as well. So we'll continue to look at our class sizes. The only thing that we did put sort of back in the budget that we've taken out last year, and that is there's some of the JV sports teams. Not that that's a huge impact on the budget, but it is an impact. Last year, after a long, hard summer, you decided to open it up and say, we're going to try to offer those JV sports. And so you'll see, and Cheryl will show that there's an uptick in athletics. It's not a huge number, but there is an uptick. We have found, however, we have been unable to secure sufficient numbers of kids to participate, for example, in JV high school soccer. We just didn't have enough students for that, so we only had a varsity team. So at any, you see that in the budget. That's certainly something that you can continue to have some conversations about. What we did was decide not to put any of the fees in the revolving account, which helps us with all the capital needs in athletics. We did that for, I believe, the girls' JV soccer program. That is not a practice we would like to continue with on a regular basis since it would really drain our opportunities to fix the scoreboards and the fields and the grubs and all the things that we need to do to keep athletics running. So we do have some increases there in officials, the officials cost us more than they used to. And so police, their hourly rate is higher than it was in previous years. So you'll see some uptick in athletics. You will see uptick in some, in, you know, health insurance. You know, we're not thinking, because of the number of retirements we have, you'll see that we have gone into that in, you know, very low, you know, hoping that we can hire some really, you know, less experienced teachers to offset people's retirement. We are going to be involved in negotiations, as you know, going forward. So that obviously will, will impact the budget and cause us to potentially shift some things around in order to make all those numbers work over time. So at any rate, please understand that when you see this budget, it's, you're going to say, oh, there's nothing new here. And you're going to be right. There's nothing new here. There is a position, a new intervention tutor at the, at the middle school. We do believe that we will be shifting around some high school staffing from maybe English into special ed. So we have some reasons we have here. So we're going to be doing some moving around some of staff. Some of those staff members we've had conversations with and so on and so forth. Evan's probably saying, how many transfers will there be? We don't see a lot of transfers. We really don't at this point. I mean, if things were to go increasingly south at the state level or something, maybe. But understand that the state, although certainly the governor gave everybody a great big pat on the back, I mean, in his office, the other night at the state of the state, if you listen to the state of the state, they're giving $20 per kid. $20 per student for us is $41,000 of new state money to run our school. And then it's going to cost us $26,000 more for, for transportation as part of our contract. So I think what we've got, Cheryl, how many, what do we have now for cash if we get, you know, 26 off the, off of 41? So that's the new state money we have. So any new cost we've had in this budget, any new cost is directly across the table to the towns. So just appreciate that. Number two, you will see, and we will have a conversation in this, in this presentation that Cheryl will give. And I really commend our planning facilities team as well as Cheryl and Ned spending a lot of time on looking at our capital needs over time. We did not do some of the capital needs that we had anticipated to do because we cut it out of the budget last year. We warned committee, please be cautious about that. We have very good schools, very well maintained schools. And we do have an obligation to try to continue that. So we will, we, we will show you a budget without any capital in it. We'll show you another budget bottom line with, with all of the capital in it. And then, you know, we'll have conversations about what do we really need to do. And again, I say for the public, and I ask this is put into the record, that the town of Ocam and the town of New Braintree must address their public address systems. You cannot communicate with all of your children. If you have a safety issue where it is required that you talk with the staff in every classroom simultaneously, you cannot do that. And that lack is a serious concern, in my opinion. The fire panel in Ocam is another serious concern that we have. And so I say again, I know it's $30,000 and nobody wants to spend it, but 30-year-old PA systems, we can't. And they, and the selectmen will say, you can get parts for those. Well, we can't get parts for them.
They keep saying that.
Yeah, well, yes, we'll.
We need to maybe put that on a letter and say, okay.
Yeah, and we, we definitely can put this in a letter. My concern is that is a piece of capital that will last multiple years. Put it on a debt exclusion if you don't have the capacity under levy, because your levies are very tight. But $30,000 to ensure, and, and, you know, God willing, we will never, ever have a situation where we really need it. But if we do, and if we have failed for $30,000, I want it in the record that I've told you and told you and told you, not you, but the selectmen in those member towns. These are things that must be addressed. There, and I, you know, my, my commendations to Hardwick and to Hubbardston and Barry with their fire panels. Barry has some time before they really get serious about their PA system, but again, that's another thing. We look at our school district and we often say, we have new schools everywhere. We have very well maintained schools, but they're not new schools, people. They're 25 and 30 years old. I know it's hard to believe sometimes because I sometimes still think they're new schools. They're not new schools. And some of these systems are pretty much antiquated and with the new digital world, they are terribly antiquated. So I'm going to encourage the school committee from the member towns who continue to have this issue with, with PA systems and so forth to really help us address that this year. I, I can't imagine a town meeting that wouldn't support it. And I would be shocked that, that if it were on debt exclusion, that people wouldn't, wouldn't vote for it. But of course, I've been shocked before. So that being said, I, I will leave it now to Cheryl, who of course will do a very deep dive into numbers, far deeper than some of you would like for the first round because it does get to be a little complex at times. But we've done as you have asked. And please understand that this is not a budget that when you see it, you'll be able to say, oh, I bet you we can still cut another million out of this. You can't. So I'll leave you with that and thank Cheryl for her efforts on this. You just need to move because Cheryl needs the entire screen.
As we start, it came to my attention that we have two members on our committee who haven't gone through our budget process since from the beginning. So there are a couple slides in here that we've all seen a bazillion times. We're like asking you to just give them the courtesy of trying to understand why we do what we do when we talk about our budget. So I say building the budget without the benefit of the new strategic plan. And the reason I say that is because the way in which we start our budget process is by looking at the strategic plan. That's developed with input from the school committee members, administrators, town officials, teachers, community members. And we will be working on that. It's one of the things we're trying to do simultaneously with everything else we're doing this spring. From the strategic goal, plan, the district goals are derived. And from that, the budget gets built. Because our budget is the spending plan for the district goals.
And just to, just to mention, the reason that the strategic plan, while we want to get started on that, we're waiting for the final Collins report because obviously there's all kinds of information in that that will help us buttress the work that we're doing on the strategic plan.
So as, I'm getting used to a new screen here myself, so it's kind of weird to not see what you guys are seeing up there. The critical factors to a successful strategic, strategic plan, still people say, are is that we budget looking at our strategic goals and looking at it at a strategic level rather than what do we need just next year? So that's what we tried to do. And we want to make sure that our strategic goals are supported by the budget and the budget process. And we want to make sure to the best of our ability that we have sufficient resources and that funding is allocated in the areas that definitely need the most funding. And what we try to do, the objective of preparing our budget, is to make the best use of all of our resources, which are people, time, space and money, so that we can meet the district's mission, vision and goals. Okay, so let's look at how many kids we're building a budget for this year. As our, as of our October 1 enrollment, there are 2,248 students that are sitting. that are sitting in seats in Quavon schools. That's down a hundred and forty-seven from just last school year. It's down a hundred and seventy-eight over the past three years, but it's over nearly a thousand students over the last fourteen years. That's, I've been keeping the data as we go forward. So as we've shown that graph on our enrollment, we are continually to go down. Some of the educational challenges, or some may say opportunities, that we're faced with in building this budget are improving student achievements. These are things that Sheila talks about on almost every, every policy meeting, right, and most of our school committee meetings. We're looking to improve student achievement. Something that's really kind of new on the front is addressing social emotional needs of students and how those social emotional needs are impacting those students' learning. We are looking at evaluating and approving our special education process and programming. That is something that the school committee voted on for this current year, and we are looking for the right consultant to help us to come in and look at not only what our process is, but also looking at our programs that we have in-house for special education students, is there an opportunity to bring new ones in? And are we doing the best we can with our money in that area? We also look to support administrators and chief teachers in transitioning to the more rigorous curriculum standards that Sheila mentioned earlier tonight, and addressing and implementing the mandates. It seems like every day now, just get another mandate with us to meet today. So it seems like every day we get something new that we have to do and no money backing that mandate up. So now let's look at some of our fiscal challenges and opportunities. We all have heard this a bazillion times now. We have a declining enrollment. There's a decline in the general student age population, we've shown with our demographic study, as well as the Collins Center prepared for us at our last meeting. We have a loss of resident students to charter school and choice school, almost to the tune of a million dollars for the school year based on October one. There's also declining enrollment in surrounding districts, thereby limiting our opportunities to bring more students here for school choice. We are looking at our long-term space needs. We've been talking about excess school capacity and how to handle that. That's one of the things Collins Center is helping us with. And a new one that came on the horizon just this week, our food and nutritional services manager went to her tech meeting, which is the collaborative we belong to for purchasing our food and milk for the school lunch program. The limits have been set so that we most likely will not be able to order food and have it delivered directly to our elementary schools. So we have to spend a lot of time, Carrie and I, sitting down and say, what are we going to do? Because we are either going to have to bid those, the food, produce, groceries, milk separately, and most likely get a much higher price than what we get with the collaborative that deal with twenty to thirty different districts, or we're going to have to purchase a refrigerated truck and get a driver that's going to satellite the food from the high school to the four smaller elementary schools. So this is something new, and we talk about our excess school capacity and where we should be putting our money. We're going to be struggling. We talked about dip out of school choice a lot, especially at the end of the school year, but if we have to raise our prices so that we can cover our food and milk costs, we may be looking at even higher billing at the end of the year from our students in those schools. So I want to take a little time and say, where are our students, so we understand what we're paying for? Of the students that are in our schools, nineteen hundred and seventy-six of them live in our district, and you can see it's broken down by town, and you can see that there's really a loss of students in all of our five towns. A hundred and twenty-one less students this year than last year, coming from our five We have, my screen's a small, three hundred and twenty-two students coming into Quavon this current school year as of October one on the school choice program. And you can see how we had a rise in, I believe it's FY '08, the highest year was four hundred and twenty-nine. And the way in which FTEs calculated for school choice students, the actual number of days they were in our district. So if they come in on day one, but they happen to move and go to another school, or they choose to go back to their home school, then the number of days divided by a hundred and eighty is an FTE. It's not by a head count for school choice, because we also get the money by FTE, not by head count. That's why it looks a little bit different there. So three hundred and twenty-two students are coming into Quavon schools this school year. We also have, of those students, forty-seven of those resident students are in out-of-district special education placements as of October one. And two of the students that are school choice in are placed out in an out-of-district.
Please understand that we don't pay that placement cost, the sending cost.
We also have other students attending our schools. One is enrolled as a tuition-in student, so that their home district pays their tuition. And then two of our students that are residents are receiving services only, so they do not, they're not one of those twenty-two, forty-eight sitting in our seats. They come in most likely for speech, correct, Kristin?
Yes.
And then we have this school year, one hundred of our resident students are school choicing out. You can see that we've gained in that, our graph is going up there. Last year we had a hundred and ten, which was closer to the ninety-five, Father Wickman ninety-five the year before, so I'm not really sure where ten of those kids went to, but it looked a little weird to me that it spiked up really in one year. And I knew someone was going to ask where they're going, so I have where they're going. We, I did a little more research. Patty Stoltz at the high school, who was our SIMS coordinator, she helped me identify where some of these are going and why, because the large number is like thirteen to Ralph Mahar. I said, Patty, why are they going there? And we believe that all thirteen are there for the Gateway to College program. So we identified a few of our kids that did not graduate last year are going to get credits and getting actually credits from Mount Wachusett Community College to get both their high school diploma and earn college credit.
Yeah, but I should acknowledge you. The Gateway program is an at-risk student program. It is not, shall we call it an advanced placement program. It is a group of students who have struggled because of school adjustment problems in school settings, a typical high school setting. So they are probably older than the typical, and they, last year we were involved with a program like that at Quincymane. We were the, what we call the host school. It kills your graduation rate, because most of these students do not ever graduate from high school or obviously from the Mount or Quincymane. So these are students who are at risk, but who have decided that they will try what we call an alternative way to get that high school diploma. The success rate is probably forty percent of those students will actually make it. Most will not. We hope that most will, because once the Mount or Quincy gets there, gets them, they can help them get their GED as well. So the problem we had in, for example, we had, most of the Wachusett kids were on our, okay, we were the host school, most of whom didn't make it, and our graduation rate just was decimated for about three years, because we had a three-year host contract. Ralph C. Mahar has their gateway school on an innovation school, so they are able to have a graduation rate for those thirteen kids that does not impact their general graduation rate. So please understand that this is not a pathway to college necessarily. This is a hope that we can, by restructuring their day and giving them more independence and opportunities to have a job, as well as go to school, that they will be able to get their high school diploma. So that's what the Gateway program is. So now you think that these kids are like dual-enrolled and are getting college credits and, you know, ready to move on. That's not the case.
And as you said, we did see some nineteen-year-old ninth graders on that list.
Yes, we did.
Down at the bottom, MAVA is the Massachusetts Virtual Academy, where we have seven of our students enrolled, which is an online high school, and also in TEC, actually not only high school, there's our elementary schools as well. And TEC is T E C, which I could not find out what T E C stands for, but it's T E C Connections Academy, also the Commonwealth Virtual Academy. So there's, twelve of our students are learning online. So that's kind of like a breakdown of where our hundred students are going out.
Cheryl.
Great.
Would a math and science academy kid be still ours, or would that be Worcester?
That's not Worcester's. That's an entirely different placement. That's not in our catch. Once they go over to the Science Math Academy, they're in that academy, which is not really a charter school, it's really a state-run school.
Right, so how, so would they still be counted as Quav, they're not counted as Quavon?
I don't know how many we have. Do we have one or two there?
No, we don't have many right now.
We don't have many right now.
On this virtual schooling, do you have any data on success rates?
Well, obviously the data that is available is at DESI, and it has not been particularly successful. But I can get you that data, but DESI keeps it, we don't.
Curiously, do we survey, just for the sake of comments of parents, why they may leave the district?
We have, in the past, we have done that and found that we have a very, very poor return rate on surveys. Whether or not we could, through exit interviews, get more, you know, personal, one-on-one, that may be helpful, we haven't really had a lot of success. I have a lot of information about the Wachusett, the thirteen that go there is primarily to play District One athletics in very sophisticated teams.
How about where?
And the issue that we have with where, that's a different situation. I don't know what that's about, but the Wachusett, it's definitely about being able to play at a very, you know, District One, yeah, because it's a very large school. It's the only really large school where kids really could travel. Others, we have some students, you know, who are going to a school maybe because a parent works there. We have other issues where they go to play a particular sport that they couldn't play or they weren't, they sat on the bench more than the parents thought they should, so some of it's athletic. I'm assuming some of it obviously is academic, but again, we've gotten very, very little information back from those surveys. We can attempt to do that again, but I think once, they have this idea that we're angry at them, and we're not. I mean, we certainly are welcoming a whole lot of students in here, and so it's really hard to get parents to kind of talk to you. There's a few, I know a few cases where parents have been very angry with the coach, fiercely, and they're not hearing him, because the coach didn't play them, and they know that they can play more at another school. And so some of them are athletic issues. Wachusett is, you know, athletic for the most part, and they have a gymnastics program. I have an eighth grader here now who, at Wachusett is too crowded, it can't take any more students, it doesn't have the capacity. This is a student who desperately wants to be in the gymnastics team. We don't have a gymnastics team. That may be a place where we can co-op and talk to Mr. Myville about that, because we do have some young people, especially young girls, who've participated in gymnastics, you know, parents doing private things, and then they get to high school and they can't really, you know, do gymnastics unless we could co-op like we do with our hockey program and, you know, our swimming program.
Just to make a comment, you know, thank you, this data is informative when we need it. You know, the high watermark was four twenty-one, and still three hundred and twenty-two students want to come to Quavon. We are doing the right things. We have good programs, and I know sometimes our own, you know, our own politic of what's going on in the district, and where we can support and not support. So I understand the push and pull, that both from losing potential students coming to us, and then ones that are our own enrollments that may go elsewhere, what are their drivers? But no, thank you, and I think just continuing with data, and, you know, we all believe that it's right for kids.
And I'm happy to attempt the survey again, and even if we get ten or twenty percent back, we might get some trend information that's helpful to us.
And I know you want to say in the report here, is there a perspective or to look at Virtual Academy or anything like that, for us to maybe look as an alternative draw to bring more students in? Is it a cost-benefit way of doing?
That's been terribly unsuccessful.
Okay, just Carrie.
From what the data, especially when you have a kindergarten or a first grader in the virtual classroom. I think it's probably something that might be reasonable to imagine in high school where there's some independent learning, but.
Dual enrollment with higher ed.
Yeah, I think we should be doing more blended instruction in our schools, especially at our physical level, and that obviously is very difficult to do when you have Hardwick and New Braintree that don't even have, they are dial-up.
Right.
It's really hard for them. And I know that Ned, you know, talked with me a lot about parents and their concerns. They just don't have some of the access in Hardwick that makes kids being able to do stuff online on a consistent basis easy. It's kind of hard for them. So I did bring up at a meeting with our legislators about, get on it, let's get broadband up in the western part of the state. This is nuts. And there's another, they have a portion that they claim is really going to happen. It's really going to happen, but I've heard it's really going to happen and get before. So it's really hard, because part of our school district obviously is, doesn't have some of the access that we would wish for them.
Do you have a question? Do those figures include placements in private schools so far?
No. No, 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 we don't carry any data on that, because we don't, no money is associated with private schools for us.
Looking at students in charter schools, we've talked about this a lot, and how much of our money and our revenue stream goes to charter schools, especially you see in the last three years, that is basically when the North Central Charter School in Pittsburgh closes doors and reopened as the Sizer School, and this year we have twenty-nine students in charter schools. Last year that was thirty-three students. And you can see that twenty of them of the twenty-nine are going to the Sizer School and nine are going to private schools.
And all of those are from Hubbardston, so that's an interesting.
All but one.
All but one.
All but one. Looking at more of our fiscal challenges or opportunities. We have minimal state aid that we're expecting, and I'll get to the numbers shortly, but in all of those sources of state aid, regional transportation, circuit breaker, we don't see any change in circuit break for next year, and we actually see a loss of McKinney-Vento, which is reinforcement for homeless student transportation. We believe that there's going to be a larger loss of state and federal grant funding for this next fiscal year. The early education grant, we lost our kindergarten grant for this year. It's not expected to come back at all for us, and we also have concerns that we may see reductions in our largest special ed grant, the IDEA grant, which are a lot of our programs.
That's from the federal level, and if any of you watched any of the, shall we say, interviews of the candidates who may be, you know, serving in the new Trump administration, the individual who is, I think Debbie Ross, who's going to end up being Secretary of Education, is a big charter school person and also a vouchers for private school person, and when people were trying to talk with her at her hearings about the IDEA grant, which is our great big special education grant, she basically didn't know what it was and thought that, couldn't understand why that was, that that amount of money sent out to the school should be looked at. So we are very worried about what's going to happen from the federal level with the IDEA and vouchers to private schools, and I mean, that could be devastating to us.
The mass budget and policy sector, which I share a lot of their newsletters with the school committee, they sent out an email yesterday called, "The First Take on the Governor's Budget," and this is a quote from them, it says, "Increases in Chapter Seventy-Eight for local schools increased by ninety-one million dollars, roughly two percent, keeping in line with, as they say, is the rate of inflation. This is less of an increase than the previous years." Well, for Quavon, that equals forty-one thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Please don't spend it all in one place, because as soon as we get it, it's taken away on the next screen, because we're going to see a reduction to our regional school transportation. That is not because our expense went down, because we have maintained the same contracts or the same expense for the last three years. So, which means they are reducing the funding for regional school transportation. And you'll see that our charter tuition, though however, is going up a little bit. So our net new money from the state aid is twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's not going to get as far as we tried to plan our budget.
And I would say the twenty dollars per student is what two hundred and twenty districts are getting. Others, because of increased enrollments in those districts, will be getting more. About two hundred and twenty districts will be getting the twenty dollars per student, at least in the governor's budget. Maybe we'll get luckier in the House and the Senate.
Some more fiscal challenges that we spoke of as we were building our budget, as I took a look at our member town levy capacities. And this is for the current year. This is data that's posted on the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services webpage. And this is why it's so difficult when we sit at this level and make cuts to our budget and expect that we're going to get a budget passed in our towns, because you can see that Hardwick has the largest levy capacity for this fiscal year right now, which means they have seventy-one thousand dollars unencumbered for this fiscal year. Barry has thirty-nine thousand. Hubbardston has three thousand dollars, so they're almost right at their levy capacity without going to an override, but New Braintree is three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Now, they of course, they may have money in stabilization and in other accounts, but as far as what they can raise and appropriate, it will, the new numbers from the state will say they can take two and a half percent of last year, add that, plus any new growth. And I suspect... And I suspect new growth continues to be slow. What do you see, Tex, in your work?
Very little.
Very little. So with no new growth, they don't have a lot of, they're not going to grow a lot of capacity this year.
And okay, I'm going to say slightly more than eight hundred dollars available for this fiscal year. So we are, we know that that's one of our constraints. In technology, we know that it's going to cost us money for infrastructure improvements, hardware expansion, and our refresh cycle. That's why we made that transfer tonight. So that we actually went into the budget that was presented by the technology director and cut out that amount of money from the FY eighteen budget that we're funding with this year. So it's not like he's getting extra stuff this year. It's just taking it one year, trying to get it onboard and get our students prepared for that test now. And again, addressing and implementing mandates are an educational PIA as well as a fiscal one because all of these new mandates are coming and there's no money associated with them. So we need to find out how we're going to, how we're going to get all of these mandates met without any additional money. And then funding the capital plan. That's a big concern of ours going forward to FY eighteen.
You have that at your place, I believe.
Yep, we're going next to the capital plan. The Plant and Facilities Subcommittee met on January fifth, and some changes were made as of capital plan. If you remember, we put together a brother, a large document, which I don't have with me tonight, but we put together a capital plan that went from FY seventeen out to our latest year, which was 2021, that the Plant and Facilities Department met several times last year on, recommended to the school committee, and the school committee voted upon it and accepted the capital plan. But then we did not fund it when it came to budget time. So there is at your place a list that's a little bigger than this screen here so that you can see what was available or what was asked to be funded last year in FY seventeen and what plans actually were completed. In blue is some plans that, projects that were completed or partially completed, and those were the annual floor replacements in each school. But we didn't get a whole lot done out of the budget that was passed for this fiscal year. So when the Plant and Facilities Subcommittee met on January, we looked at the remaining projects that we had hoped to do for this fiscal year, and they were moved to the FY eighteen column. And then added to what we had planned to do for FY eighteen as well. So those capital projects that the school committee had agreed to put on a funding plan last year totaled five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for this year. And each of these projects have been added to the budget that you'll see soon. So in addition to this, and I did explain last year when we put the capital plan together, we haven't seen much hope of our towns picking up some of these projects at their annual town meeting. But we have, over time, tried to keep pace with at least repairing our floor coverings in our schools. Talking with Claire Barnes, our Plant and Facilities manager, tonight, I said, "Okay, where do you think we are so I can tell the committee?" And about fifty percent of our flooring across the district is in good shape. That means fifty percent is not in such good shape. New Braintree, Tricia will also tell you, is in really good shape, so that school's pretty good. But otherwise, we would like to do, at least keep pace with being able to replace one or two carpets or tile floors in our classrooms and our hallways. If we say, because it's, these are big numbers, I do understand that these are big numbers, but if we just say we're not doing any of our floor replacement plan, we're going to be in trouble in a couple of years because we won't be able to get the money together, especially the way in which we're receiving state aid in the last few years. Of being able to keep up to having safe floors. So these projects are all in the budget as they are. In addition, via our regional agreement, any project that costs five thousand dollars or more at an elementary school is the responsibility of the town. And these are the projects, Maury mentioned a few of them in the beginning when we spoke. These are the projects that the Capital Plan Committee, for lack of a better term, believes are very important projects in each one of those schools. And they have seen this list for at least the last three fiscal years, and they'll see it again. My hope this time is when I actually send them a copy of the capital plan and they read it hopefully, they'll see why we think they're important projects that need to be done. And these total four hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Just to add, you notice in New Braintree, there's a roof replacement situation. Claire and the team at the Plant and Facilities, and I and Jess Bennett are working with the National Association of School Building Projects to put together a grant for that. That grant, the grant window of application opened on January sixth, and we have to have that data and information into the state by the seventeenth of February for repair. Please understand that even though we make application for the project, the project may not be funded for two to three years. The roof obviously will continue to maintain until that time. The concern obviously that the MSBA group will have, especially knowing the Collins Center is doing a program for us where we're looking at whether to close schools or keep schools open. If they fund this project, will there be what we call a clawback? In other words, they fund the roof and then the school is closed. Are they going to clawback and take the grant back? The schools in the western part of the state that have closed schools before they're paid off are battling back and forth with the state about whether there'll be a clawback. I know that Claire and Cheryl are going to a meeting on February sixth, and I've asked them, because MSBA officials will be there, I've asked them to query them about the clawback because that's very, it's a, it's a... So we will have the grant application ready to go by the seventeenth, but funding will, all, funding is going to be dependent on where we are in the queue. And we'll know more about that once we file the application, but we are, that is underway.
So as we move forward through our budget process, the school committee will need to decide, are we going to, are they going to accept the capital plan as recommended by the Plant and Facilities Subcommittee and budget it accordingly, or are we going to modify that capital plan document? We don't want to have capital plan document and the timetable over here saying one thing and then our budget saying another thing. I'd like to keep them in line as we move forward. So we'll be talking about that.
Well, this is, we have here, I mean, when I first saw it tonight, I was sort of horrified.
It's not the first time you saw it.
Well, it was my first by the time.
No, you saw this, you saw this in the summers last year. If you don't know, it says nine million dollars on the bottom. That includes the roof projects of the schools.
Is there a way that we could, in other words, for example, in Hardwick's case, the telephone system was put in. For us, at that time, it was a big shock. But what about the other items there? Can we say this is number one, number two, number three, or not?
In the capital plan, each one of these, it's very hard to put everything on one piece of paper, but in the capital plan document itself, it has what our priority is, whether it is high, medium, or low priority on the list, so that is part of the document. This is just the one sheet that kind of like summarizes the timing and the anticipated expense.
But maybe helpful, Jess, if you were to get that plan in the Dropbox for everyone so that they could look at it before our next meeting.
Something, yeah.
Okay, so when we put it all together, this is what we came up with. This is the document, which the school committee voted on the budget, and these are the line items which we transferred between and amongst tonight. The bottom line, including the five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for capital projects, is a two-point-eight percent increase over the current year. And you can see where the increases are and where the decreases are that we've made adjustments to. If every capital plan is not included in the final budget, which I highly do not, you know, do not recommend we go that route at all. So what I'm saying is, operationally, it's a one-point-three percent increase. We did what you asked, Mr. Wickler. It wasn't pretty. Lots of things were cut out. But as Maury said before she left her seat here, I hope the committee doesn't think that, they then want to say to us, "Go deeper," because there really isn't anything else we can cut. Not like last year, but we went back and went back. You asked for it, and that's what we did before we brought this budget to you. So this is where it is. I can answer any questions that you might have. My, my chair, can you, can you, just as you take a look at the capital plan,
you will see the, those items that we are recommending in two thousand eight, eighteen, those are the items in the capital plan that are included in that budget.
They're right here. They're right here.
Okay.
So let me, we'll start, we'll start there. It is the annual floor replacement in each one of the buildings. Additionally, at the high school, we've talked about this, we talked about this last year. We have an updated price. The lift that is used for various amount of projects around our district, it's not stable anymore. It's really getting to a safety concern. We thought, we had in the capital plan last year, forty thousand dollars for replacement of that lift. We have a quote now of twenty-five thousand dollars. And it's a two-man lift, which is what we need to address lighting issues in our new skylight in the high school cafeteria. So that would, that would be a great thing that we could get done.
Sure. What's the lifetime on that? Someone say, we...
Claire, ten years?
The one we have now is twenty-three years old, and it's a single piston that goes up. What we're looking at is a double piston, a lot more stable. It's serviced every year, but it's...
What's the life on the new one there?
We're probably looking at twenty years or more. If we may, you know, service it every year and take care of it. This lift before my time had an accident. It was repaired, but it is, it was an accident moving it from one building to another, I was told. So, you know, we've repaired it over the years.
And that would service all our schools?
Yeah, we move it with the school, one-time dump truck to school to school.
Well, we can sit down in one-time dump truck right now because that, if we had two things other than the flooring to do at least, we had two things on this list that we absolutely need funding for. It is that lift and the dump truck. The dump truck's how many years old? Claire, I didn't bring my...
It's two thousand five.
It's a two thousand five, and it's totally rotting out. So we're trying our best to keep it together, but in order to move this lift around, we need to have a stable truck to move it around in. We believe that that's a good cost, Claire, the sixty thousand dollars is...
Yeah, approximately.
To replace the truck that we have now. No more, no less.
The plow we have should still be able to stay with it. The sand will still go on it.
The other project, which is the parking lot driveway, side rock repairs around the middle high school, we are, we are going out this year to bid for the engineering study on that using parking lot fees and revolving account for that. So we should know better by the end of this fiscal year of what that project will really cost us. I'm hopeful that we could get it started, but I'm not hopeful that we can get it funded for next year. And then, as I said, the rest of the schools is the annual floor replacement.
What's the asbestos containment and repairs? Is that a safety concern?
It is not a safety concern. We're mandated to have six-month inspections. We have a licensed person every six months. Every three years, we have a report. The initial report that was done, I can't remember the year, it's probably eight or nine years ago. They put in their recommendation. So, you know, the inspection, could at some point bring about something that's deteriorating that we may have to move forward? But at the moment, it's there, so the towns know it's there. It's a potential hazard. OKAM did do part of theirs when they did their roof project. They had ceiling tiles that were asbestos, and they abated all those.
So this is a middle, middle school that...
All schools, except for Hardwick and New Braintree and Central Office.
Okay, I got you.
So those are the projects that are in, in the number of the bottom-line budget that gets it to the two-point-eight percent increase. And as I said, without that, operationally, we've brought forward a one-point-three percent increase for our budget. Knowing what we know today.
Knowing what you do know today, because I know your insurance is a, is a casualty here, what's our insurance cost?
Two-point-eight million dollars is what I've got budgeted for next year.
Okay. What were the objection of last year and then this year in regards to the increase percentage? I'm just curious.
I'd have to look it up, Mark.
The difference between two-point-eight and what we, you said it's equivalent budget. So are we still putting two-point, we had two-point-eight last year?
I didn't say equivalent budget. I didn't say...
No, you didn't say equivalent budget, but you used the word...
I used it. I used the word...
You did. I apologize.
Service delivery.
You did. Equivalent to FY seventeen.
I in no way want you to think that we built a budget with level funding in our accounts. We did not do that. We made cuts in places. We added to add places. And right now, I don't know what our cost is for our insurance policies for this fiscal year because we get those costs in March.
That's what I'm thinking of. Okay.
So I had to budget, budget for next year, not even knowing what this year costs. So no, I, what I did for health insurance is I got the actual enrollment under the old plans that ended in December, the actual enrollment, believe it or not, as of today. And I put in, I believe, a ten percent increase because we looked at eight-point-four after we had our new broker Blue Cross over the head this year.
That's what I was thinking.
So we do it by the number of plans, Mark. It's not like I, you know, just go out and put a number in there.
Oh, I know that. I know you have a research and you're doing it. And you've been pretty good right along, I believe. Nine-nine percent right there.
What I'm very nervous about are those people who did switch from HMO to deductible plan. Because I'm myself, one of us, and Stacy Scarry in here, we both said, "We'll try it for a year, but we're not, we're not really, we're not going to sign on for the rest of our life, but we're going to crack our costs for a year." And I'm nervous about how many people will stay there. Hopefully, we'll get more people to go there because the amount of the savings and the premium for the employee and for the district is much greater than the cost of that money that we're putting in towards the deductible.
And I think you have to all understand that health insurance is really a flux.
Yes.
Who knows a year from now what it's going to cost us to do whatever it is we're going to do.
But as you were building the budget, just wanted, and you're right, stand corrected. You know, you know me, I'll work with it. You used the word equivalent to FY seventeen.
Yeah, it's service delivery.
Service delivery. That's what I wanted. Okay, I'm with you.
No, actually, Maury and I, two occasions, just this week, two occasions alone this week, went through every single line in the budget and said, "Okay, can we do better here?" I met with the athletic director because I was wondering, if you look at the athletic line, athletic and student activities are fifteen percent. Most of that is athletics. If you had to remind me, the school committee voted to put four teams back on, three of which were fielded using athletic revolving funds, the total of thirty thousand dollars. Well, even if every athlete on those four teams paid the full fee, which they don't because free-reduced students do not pay the full fee, that'll bring in three thousand as compared to thirty thousand dollars in expenses for those teams. You can't continually go after a resource, resource, a revenue resource that isn't replenishing. So that's why the athletics is up so high, is because those four teams are back in this budget. We did, however, keep the middles for the rest of them.
And there's no question that obviously, we understand this is a preliminary budget and a budget that you will want to have more conversations about and so on and so forth, whether it be about athletics or whatever. There is in this, Mark, I did lie about equivalency. We did put back a point-six, okay, a point-six music person.
Point-six, okay.
Remember, we shifted some personnel, and we have, after Lee and Dave and I met with pro music group up. And so we, compared to last year's budget, we would have a one-point-six, one-point-six number of personnel compared to the budget that we passed last year. Because we're in the midst of it all, we made some shifts around. So that is, that is one area, an intervention, a tutor, intervention specialist, I'm sorry, that's going to be at the, at the middle school, and hopefully some coaching time in mathematics. But other than that, there's no new stuff in here.
So I know there was, so the JV sports are back and some of the other athletics are back. What about the elementary programs that we cut back last year? Is any of that back?
No, those we, by the time we were done, those were all restored, and the specials.
Right.
Yeah. But we didn't need as many people because of the fact that there are fewer, fewer sections of first grade across the district, fewer sections of fifth grade across the district. And no question, do we have some class sizes at the elementary school here and there that were going, there are like the thirty-one in OKAM? Yes. But that will remain the same. Students will have physical education and so forth. We are hopeful. Right now, we've been working with music folks as far as how they schedule lessons because they're doing it during the second phys ed block to try to keep it from pulling kids out of their ELA or their mathematics programming. We also are looking and contemplating, if we were to make an adjustment in probably grades four, five, and six, okay, and not have physical education twice a week, but introduce a world language once a week, it's a, you know, it's, shall we say, just a switch of, you know, who we're paying. But what we're contemplating that, we're looking at that, we haven't had a lot of conversations with principals yet, but we thought about looking at... but we thought about looking at our specials and ensuring that whatever time the specials that we have, what should we be doing with kids? Do, you know, so, so we're going to look at that. But no, definitely that program stays. Five days a week, they have a special. We're a little concerned about what will our technology or our media program...
Right, and that's why I was getting that technology and music more than anything else.
Yeah. And our, and our technology, well, we have to get fourth graders ready, okay, to have a level of proficiency in writing an essay on the computer, okay, for that test. And what's our media program going to look like? Because we really need to find a way to ensure that teachers are working and having kids work on computers all the time. You can't plump them in front of you the first time they're having a test and think that all of a sudden they're going to be able to, when processed, an essay that they are generally writing by hand. So we're really, I'm very concerned about our capacity to do that. But we're going to work on figuring that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know this is an incredible oversimplification, but, you know, just looking at this, like, if I'm on the outside in the town looking at this, enrollment went down one-hundred-and-forty-seven. I take a look at, you know, class size and I'm saying, that's six or seven classes that no longer exist, yet five-point-four percent instructional supported increase. What's the answer?
Well, why don't you guys hopefully have coaching interventions?
The biggest increase there is classroom instructional technology within that roofing. So there's, there's a hundred-and-twenty or a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars' worth of more hardware in that line than there is in this year's budget.
That wouldn't fall under technology?
Not, not, in the state, not if it's classroom instructional technology by the DESE standards. That falls within the twenty-one and thirty-two hundreds. That code is twenty-four fifty-one. So no, it is not. The other ones are fourteen, fifteen, twenty-five fifty. District-wide technology and building technology. Classroom instructional is in that line. That's the biggest increase.
But you can see what I'm saying.
I can. And if those one-hundred-and-forty-seven kids came out of...
The high school.
Yeah, only the high school, or only the middle school, or shall we say, only grades K-one and two. Then yeah, we can, we can probably tee some teachers out. But if ten came from here and another ten came from there, it's really hard to just say, well, obviously you lose more personnel. If you look at the number of personnel, teaching and other, that we have lost in the last probably seven or eight years, it's pretty substantial.
What that really means, Mark, is that those grids that I did for the task force that showed how many classrooms we need in each of our school last school year, there's even more empty ones that could be there for this school year. That's what, that's what that means. It means our elementary schools are going to be even less cost-efficient than they were a year and a half ago when we started talking about...
Basically, the Collins studies are basically half of that. You say more than that?
Well, those numbers...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Somebody would say then, why would you make capital investments in a school that's only thirty percent full? And I know your argument, I mean, you got to keep these things up, you know, the town...
Well, I would say, careful with the town. And they are going to tell the Squawdon Regional School District not to help continue to fix their buildings. I would worry about their sanity. Those are buildings that are probably the most expensive pieces of real estate the town owns. I can't imagine they would, they should be coming after us with pitchforks if we were not saying to them, let's make sure that these are your community centers, that we are well-maintained. Now, I don't...
They don't want to fix their own.
Well, no, I understand they, they don't want to fix their own. I think that's imprudent. And they can continue not to vote it, not to vote it, not to vote it and let their buildings fall into disrepair. But I, unless they're going to close those buildings and allow us to move kids somewhere else, our job is to fight to make sure that those schools are appropriate for our kids and that they're safe and that they're, they're really, you know, they're appropriate for schools. And so I don't see any indication, and I could be wrong.
Maureen, I interrupted from the... My partner here has been running the floor for about half an hour.
I'm sorry.
And it hasn't been recognized.
I'm sorry, they can leave. I just wanted to ask Cheryl if she could touch upon what I discussed in the beginning on the professional development...
It's coming, it's coming. It's coming.
Oh, I thought we were... Please see any more slides.
No, because we weren't sure if we wanted to talk about that. Was it, we have time or whatever. We thought there'd be a lot more discussion on the budget, so the product is here.
One question I have is this, out of the one-hundred-and-forty-seven, are any of those graduates?
No, none of them.
No.
Oh, well, those are the number of kids that are sitting here in our school. So the twelfth graders from last year are gone, but kindergarten is ready. So that's how many kids are here this school year versus last school year.
Right.
Yes.
Oh, regarding state funding, are we helped, is that part of that health harmless?
Yeah, that's what they call it.
So they don't decrease our funding?
They don't decrease it and they give us twenty dollars per student, foundation in mind.
And there's two-hundred-and-twenty school districts that are in the same situation that we are with declining or status, static enrollment. Okay, why don't you go ahead and go through some of those Collins Center things that we talked about and what's on this budget?
Okay, and these are in no particular order, but these are some of the comments that, questions that I heard over the next few days after the Collins Center report or some things that we thought were insightful about the Collins Center, Collins Center report. One comment that was made at the school committee meeting right after that was, they said that our average teacher salaries are fifteen percent lower than the state average. That's not what the Collins Center said. They said that overall teacher spending on the DESE reporting structure was fifteen-point-seven below the, the state average. It also said that the cost of living in our area was twenty-one percent lower for the same period. Our, it also stated that our average teacher salary is close to the state average, but it's a two-point-eight percent reduction. So we went to a conference, Dr. Allen's conference last night at UMass. We missed a great conference, Mr. Brophy. And one, the one thing that the speaker said was, the one thing the speaker said was, because he was talking about comparing spending to the state average. He goes, who wants to be average? It's all depends on who you are and where you want to put the funding and the resource that you, that you have to succeed. So one thing that I always do when I talk about budget is I do compare our spending to the state average, but also look at the districts right around us because you now know what they spend in Wellesley per student versus what we spend per student. So looking around, and this is all off the DESE website, for the state average, we were actually higher in two of the three years to districts that are very close to us, except for in FY fourteen where it seems like Merrick Gansett just had an anomaly in FY fourteen of being higher than us. So actually, our, even though we were lower than the state average for around our area, we were very competitive. Looking at professional development, what they said was absolutely accurate. We were spending in FY fifteen, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars per pupil on professional development as compared to the state average. And this is what those same districts around us spent in those same time periods. But you have to understand what the state is calling professional development. And what's included in that line are, if you have professional salaries that are academic coaches, we have three academic coaches in our school district, one for math and two for ELA. I want to say this because I know for a fact that a number of years ago, Wachusett considered football helmets as instructional materials. They reported, they reported football helmets as instructional materials on their end-of-year report. So it all depends on how your district is reporting on their end-of-year report. And Sheila, the first thing Sheila said was, do you think everybody, if they have coaches, report them this way? I said, no, I don't, I don't believe everybody would be. But what did I do? I went to my grade folder that has been sitting on my desk since nineteen, when they say Wachusett? We're in nineteen ninety-five, that has the DOE code structure. And I read it to Sheila and she said, we're reporting correctly. So you never know what another, how's another district is reporting. And just to say, looking at the DESE website, it's really apples to apples because I'm thinking it's more like apples to oranges. Another salary, which is the five-hundred-thousand dollars you remarked at the very beginning of our meeting tonight, is for professional development days. We have eight full professional development days in our district. Three full ones, ten half-days. The correct reporting to DESE is to take all teacher salaries for those days and record them as professional development salaries. So that's half of our total spending in FY fifteen.
Is that a true spending though?
Yes. We take every single teacher's salary, divide it by one-hundred-and-eighty, and multiply by eight, and that's the number.
What would you say, what would you say basically though? Is that when you take, when you go back to the three slides before, what you're basically kind of inferring is that every other district around us reports it erroneously.
That's not what I'm inferring. I'm inferring, do I think that everybody is so that we can, we can clearly say and be accurate to say that our average is exactly what everyone else is reporting? I'm not inferring that everyone else is doing it wrong, but I am inferring that not everybody's doing it right.
But the state is doing it right, right?
For the state.
No, the state takes our report, takes our, if I went to Stacy Scarry's office right now and pulled her report out of there and went to this total, that's the total that I'm going to see, one-oh-four-seven-three-four. They take what we report to them and they put it on their website.
But why is the state average usually half of ours then?
You know, the state doesn't check to make sure that districts are following their reporting structure. So they depend that a district uses that report that Cheryl, the guidelines that the state provides, but they're not manned, districts are not mandated to report by those guidelines. They're merely guidelines.
So like what Mark's saying, we're the only ones doing it correctly to the state then?
Well, no, but are we, but, but are there other districts, especially around us? I do not know this. Do these five districts, including four districts around us, do they have eight professional development days? I don't know what other districts have as professional development days. That's our highest cost in that reported line item. Are those salaries for professional development days?
And I think it's many factors. One is which bucket they're putting certain expenses in. As you said before, the helmets are going and whatever...
They did that particular year, yeah.
And then secondly, I mean, if our salaries are a little bit higher than, which we know, we deliberately have them a little higher so that we can have better teachers and...
That's misleading though. Like for Wachusett's teacher scale, it's higher than ours. We just have more people at the top step. As I imagine that's the case.
I'm just saying, that's an example and that basically just...
Number's a lot. Yeah, there are many factors.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely.
So it's like...
Absolutely. So as Evan said, their salary schedules might be higher, but they may not have many professional developments.
Right, so that's another factor.
Or where they are on the step.
Well, I, you know, I think it would be very simple for me to add to that at my next meeting with them as how they report professional development. To, to, to really find out of business managers or whatever and to bring that information back to you. Because I don't, I'm not saying everybody's doing it right or wrong. It's just the way in which you are, the guidelines are. Cheryl follows the guidelines.
Yeah, we're audited. We're audited. Our auditor is mandated to come out to every school district and not only do their general ledger as of, as of June, but to come out after the October report, September, actually, thirtieth report. Our end-of-year report goes into DESE. They have to come out and audit this report. And the DESE has a set of guidelines that they follow. We haven't gotten comments on our report that we're not reporting appropriately. So it's, I, I feel confident the way in which we are, we are reporting our expenditures is accurate.
Well, see, I'm, I'm not unhappy at all that we have so much investment in professional development. It's absolutely essential to move this district forward. Our failure to do so will put us where other school districts have no professional development to speak of. And those teachers are screaming for it, hoping for it, and it's absolutely necessary if we're going to move forward. If, the next time you want to go to have some elective surgery or otherwise, do you want the doctor who's had no professional development? If you do, good luck with that.
Maureen, respectfully, you can't say that there are many teachers who view professional development in a positive fashion, but a vast majority do not. And eight days is excessive in comparison to other districts, respectfully. And there are a lot of good PD things going on in this district. There's a lot that can improve from our perspective. I don't think our survey numbers would change this year. I mean, you could ask them again, but just for the other side of that.
It's, I, I certainly understand that some people don't appreciate or don't like professional development, that they believe that whatever it is that they're currently doing is sufficient and good enough. And, and I respect that opinion. However, I, I don't really believe that without professional development and good opportunities for professional development that we can move this district forward. And the research should certainly support that opinion.
Maureen, just to add more to that, you and I have had this discussion for multiple, multiple years.
You could even say decades.
Actually, yeah. The thing about it is that, I hate to say that I agree with Evan because Evan and I don't agree on many things. The thing about it is that...
It needs some E-tacs.
Your statement about the teachers screaming for professional days, I find it very hard to believe, I, in my, on scientific pole, if you will.
I mean, my, my assertion that they are screaming for it is erroneous.
I believe that it is because I, I believe that this amount of professional days that we have is demoralizing to the staff.
Well, you're not going to disagree, agree to disagree on that. And I would, I would absolutely tell you that professional development, provided in, in a way in which teachers are paid to be there to participate in it, is the only way for us to be or see a successful change. It's really difficult when we used to say to teachers, we're not going to pay you for this or anything, but, gee, would you come to PD from three to six? And that was certainly a difficult, a difficult circumstance. Some teachers were able to come, others were not able to come. It was very difficult to, to engage people in, you know, looking at a new program of studies and trying to move it forward. And I, I'm not saying that people are in heft. I'm saying that there are new skills, new information about cognitive development. We have an obligation under the law to provide teachers with free professional development sufficient to get PDPs enough for their recertifications, which we have done. So we do have that obligation.
Well, I understand that and I agree with you on that. But the thing about it is that if you're going to utilize those professional days, by God, let's get a full benefit out of it. Help the teacher out. Because I know that a lot of them need help. But the help that you're giving them probably isn't adequate.
Well, then, then we need to talk about the inadequacy of our efforts to help them. Because certainly, it's absolutely, it's really critical that we have, we offer professional development that is sustained over time, that is job embedded. That is, the research is very clear about that. Evan and I can argue about this at whatever time, whatever, whatever this money is obtained. Because if we take out those, if we take out those salaries, they're just going to a different line item. You're not saving any money.
I'm not looking to save any money, I'm just particularly tired.
I'm saying, please understand, this is not money that we could say, oh, we don't need to spend it five-hundred-and-thirty-three.
It's time in the classroom for the student. It's a disruption.
Well, I would say...
And I think it's excessive. I think they should be, the teachers absolutely need to be trained in what they're teaching. But I think it's excessive. And I have spoken to many, many, many teachers who agree with Evan and...
Well, I disagree with that.
It's a waste of time, it's a disruption. And I think it's to the detriment of the kids. I mean, I have it counted out, how many full weeks they actually go.
Principals would like to say something.
We can only speak from the elementary perspective, but the, the work that our English Language Arts teachers are being asked to do in order to implement the Common Core standards and prepare our students for the in-depth reading and writing that they're being able to ask to do by these new standards is really intensive and really hard work. And from an elementary teacher's perspective, especially at K to two, they're being asked to teach reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. So to ask them to do this intensive work outside of the school day is asking them to add hours and hours of time that they're already putting in. I mean, I sat next to one of my second-grade teachers who I would consider to be almost exemplary, but she's already, you know, up until eleven o'clock at night, working on weekends just to prepare daily lessons. If we weren't giving them the job embedded time to work with their colleagues, to plan these new units that we're implementing in the classroom, I don't know when they would do that. So I can't speak for the middle school and high school professional development, So I can't speak for the middle school and high school professional development, but I don't know how our teachers would do what we're asking them to do without those days. And it's from, from where I sit, I think it is very valuable time that we're giving them. And I don't know if many of them would be able to stay in the profession with the expectations that we have for them in the classrooms without those ten days.
And we had a, um, a teacher leader meeting last week and the teachers actually said, we need more time. They said, we sit with the consultants and we really, really want to synthesize this information, but we need to sit now with our colleagues. And so they asked me and the administrators to see if we could carve out more time for them to meet together. And they're not complaining. They aren't. They're really, they just want the time to implement all of this new learning.
More specials in the elementary school might also give that time.
But you're taking away learning time out of the classroom and that's where our dollars are supposed to be directed, is much time.
And I think the research does show that, that if, if the professional development is, is good and is delivered in the correct way, that the time taken out of time on learning is going to be increased in the end. I mean, we've got, we have districts like Westford is adding additional time. Wayland, Weston, Lincoln Sudbury, all of those districts have a half day every Wednesday or a late, no, early release, excuse me. I think they go till like one o'clock every single week. So, I mean, I think we could look to, to many districts who are increasing their time. And I, I, my biggest fear is that we take this time away and we'll never get it back. And it's really, really critical at the elementary.
I respect how everyone's speaking from their perspective, but legally speaking and morally, I am the voice of the teachers here. And I hear Maureen talking about what teachers want. And there are some that want that. But I think you implied it that everyone's on board with it. I'm pretty sure our survey would say the same thing. I respect what you're saying too, Tex, but I don't know how many teachers you talk to either. Uh, at the end of the day, this is a big issue. I, I don't think that what you guys are saying is inaccurate, that there are certainly a lot of needs. Um, I think going building by building might be a way to start to see in what buildings is PD being effective and in what buildings can it improve? Um, I don't pretend I have all the answers, but I can say definitively that I think you're gonna see teachers on the whole coming forward and saying that we want more time teaching our kids, not being trained on how to teach them. And I think you'll probably see that in the next couple, couple months.
What I kind of found, found disheartening, I mean, we have these two handouts a week apart of professional development days and oh, I don't know the exact numbers, but many of them are self facilitated by, there, there is no professional development. It's all self facilitated in sense. So they're, they're basically, it's, it's self being self.
Well, they're, they're.
There's not, there's not actually, uh, someone coming in and delivering, um, professional development to those, to those potential areas.
Well, we've worked hard to train the trainer, to, to provide consultants who work with teachers to, so that they are now teacher leaders. I think we have some ten in the district and moving to fourteen, where we've, we have trained teachers with, who have a great level of sophistication so that that collaborative work, um, we believe is, is really fulfilling the teacher needs. It's, it's amazing to me, we're having this discussion at this point of view and I, and I would prefer to have it when we have, that, that's on the, that is the agenda. Because that five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is in the budget. We're just gonna move it to a different line item if we decide to abandon all professional development in this district. Um, or a portion of it. And, and I stand, you know, and I, I know that Evan and I obviously very, very viscerally disagree on this matter. And you know what? Sometimes people who are in a job are saying, you know what, I don't like to do professional development. And sometimes we're saying, well, the, the, the research is clear. What we've seen in, in the performance of our students and the achievement of our students, especially at the elementary school, has decidedly changed. And thus, I would tell you that to, to retreat from that, I believe is a huge, huge mistake. But I guess that's, that's a war for another time. That money is in the budget, so stay in the budget. Uh, whether it's in this line item or just in the line item where they're in the classroom, whatever.
I don't think anybody's asking for eliminated professional development. But, you know, I remember when Deb first came on the board, some concerns from parents were the amount of time that, there's a hidden cost of professional development, which we, we really don't see. I mean, you know, we always see the babysitter, people have to hire the days off from work, they have to hire the vacation days, the parents have to take and whatever. So I, I guess we just wanna, we'd like to make sure that there is some value added to whatever amount of days of professional development are actually there. I mean, you know, whether it's six, whether it's seven, whether it's five, whether it's eight, you know, it's, there, there are concerns. I mean, and you brought that up on your first week here, I think you brought it up.
It is, it's, it is a concern and I think it's a disruption to the classroom. And, you know, like Jason just said, you know, are these high school teachers actually meeting? Or are they just sitting in their classrooms by themselves doing, you know, are.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't implying that.
Are all teachers benefiting as the elementary teachers?
I, 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 I mean.
The teachers are working.
I, I can, I'm just saying like the, the self facilitated is not really, to me, it's, it's not professional development. I mean, you, you, to me, you're going, you're, you're, you're hearing an expert and if you speak and, and talk and help, help you better your education with this new.
But at the high school level, the teachers are getting together and collaborating or are they reaping the benefits? It's the same as the elementary.
There, there are consultants in the, but you're.
I, I think that one thing that is maybe hard to understand, and I think Mr. Bannister could probably speak to this as well because he and I have had conversations about this, is that the way we provide professional development is we do bring in experts. But then, it's not as though you can, as a teacher, you can go and listen to an expert, tell you how to do the work and then immediately go into your classroom and change your practices so that they are effective. You have to have time to make sense of it, to apply what the consultants are telling you to your own curriculum, to your own teaching style. And it is incredibly difficult for some teachers to change, especially teachers who have been teaching in a certain, with certain teaching strategies for many years. And, um, so it, the, the self facilitation or teacher leader led facilitation is really what, what you described. It's teachers sitting together and talking, and this is what the elementary teachers have asked for more of. Once the consultant has come in, sitting together and helping one another to determine how are we going to do this work that we need to do? How are we going to make this happen for our children? And then how are we going to know if it makes a difference for our children? Because the professional development has to make a difference for student learning and we have to find out ways to measure that. And if it's not making a difference for children, we have to make changes in what, the way we're doing it, what we're asking for children, the way we're supporting it. It's incredibly complex. And I would invite any school committee member at any time to come to any of these sessions and sit with teachers and, and understand what's, what, what their discussions are. Um, the high school math department is trying to implement a incredibly challenging new math program. They are working so, and the middle school as well, working so hard together to make sense of this very, very significant change to the way they teach, to what they teach. And, um, it's a lot of work. It takes hours and hours and hours of their time. We cannot ask, I, I could not in good conscience ask them to make those kinds of changes on their own time. But I would expect that the union would be screaming, or without support, that we weren't supporting the teachers in making these changes. It's, it's, it's very, very difficult to make the kinds of changes that we're asking, that are demanded by the new standards. And as we talked about at this level, several weeks, several meetings ago, new science standards are, are coming down the pipe and the new social studies standards are being developed. As well as changes to the new English, the, the student who spoke, they're proposing changes to the English and math standards that we're still trying to implement. There, those are new proposed changes that are coming down the pipe to the, they're not significant changes, but they are changes that our teachers are still trying to implement. And now we're gonna have to change what we thought we were doing. And we're preparing for a test that we've never even seen. And we don't even have an idea exactly what's gonna be on that test. And that's.
Sheila, that, that problem you've had before in the middle school, in the one you're referring to. How many years was it in place?
Prior to the one.
Prior to the one now.
I don't, I was before me, the, um, the apprentice hall, probably ten years at least, right? Probably ten years.
Maybe I have my, my information wrong then. But I would like to emphasize the fact, that lady, um, in the back there, principal, from what school are you?
Ruggslane.
Ruggslane, okay, now, never forget. Now, she had the key words to what I'm trying to get across here. If we're gonna have this amount of professional days, make them meaningful and profitable to us. I mean, I don't wanna sit down to, I mean, if I were the one participating in this, I wanna be having a meeting to discuss another meeting. Which is what I fantasize to be. So maybe that's your wish.
I have a question. Um, you know, I'm look, I, I see these half days and actually I thought for actually improving the education. I mean, I've seen some of the programs get better because of these professional days. One of the things that I've been thinking about or curious about is why not a full day? I mean, why have the cost for a bus to take them to school just to two hours later bring them back? Now, I do understand that has a cost associated with getting a babysitter, unfortunately, maybe for a couple of hours longer. But why not take the full professional day?
Well, basically, it's, it's all about cost. Because right now, when, when teachers work for a portion of the day with our students, um, it's considered one of the one hundred and eighty days that were required by statute to provide for education in the common law. If we were to say, we're gonna have, okay, a hundred and eighty days of instruction, which would be wonderful, and ten days of professional development scattered throughout, that we would pay teachers their daily rate to participate in.
To each month, so if you had each month one.
Yeah, I mean, so we would have to pay teachers an additional amount. So that the, that, that impact on the budget would be immense. Would you agree? I mean.
I agree.
And I'm not saying that wouldn't be a, a great solution and I'd be all about it, but I, it's just, that's why it hasn't happened. It's because it's so, we can't afford it.
And there's no impact on the busing costs.
Yeah, because we still.
So regardless of whether you bus them or not be paid for them?
We pay for a hundred and eighty days.
Kids go to a hundred and eighty days and we transport them for a hundred and eighty days. But Maureen is saying that those early release days are one of those hundred and eighty days.
Well, I understand that. It's just, okay.
So if you want another day, that's not the half day, that's what they're saying, has to be a hundred and eighty day.
Right. I just, I just see, you know, I mean, I even hear from the kids that they feel it's a waste of their time. Get up in the morning, go to school, just come back home before lunch. I mean, my own kids do say.
Well, if I were, yeah, I, I hear you.
My friend's kids.
I'm sure they do.
So, you know, they're, where can we make this more optimal?
Well, I mean, there's no question. If we could afford it, what you suggest is absolutely correct. If we could afford it, what you suggest is absolutely correct. Um, if, if Evan and I could sit down at the negotiation table in two weeks and say, okay, Evan, would you guys work three or four more days? And we're gonna pay you your per diem. I can't imagine them running screaming from the room. In fact, I would suspect that they would say.
Be an interesting discussion.
This, this is our livelihood and we're, we're gonna pay you a professional rate.
I haven't seen an actual, are there, is there common planning time built into the, the days for, for the teachers?
So I could, I could speak to that. And to answer Mrs. Chamberlain's question, you know, high school teachers are not just sitting around. We're, we're having a lot of.
I didn't mean that.
No, I know, and actually.
I just thought they were being their class.
Yeah, and believe me, I'm not gonna sit here and say that all the professional development is effective. You have two issues. You have the cost argument that you're talking about, but you also have the effectiveness argument. Okay, I think Sheila does Herculean efforts. However, in a seven district, school district, there are certainly ways we can make it a lot more effective as well. But, um, that being said, in the high school, one of the disadvantages of the schedule they have there, and I, I believe the trimester makes it more problematic because we have so many sections. And if, if I were teaching a US History II course and Dave was teaching a US History II course, the likelihood of us having any time to analyze our work and to, to make each other better and to challenge each other and to look at new assessments, it's just not there in the school day. Whereas in the middle school, one of the great advantages, and I can say because I teach there, I have a colleague that teaches the same class as me and every day for an hour, we're able to work together and to push each other and to create new things. That doesn't exist in the high school. There's nothing Mr. Devine can do about that. He doesn't have any magic dust, but that's what they're trying to do on those days. Um, and we're trying to merge seven through twelve in those discussions, but I can say that that also, you know, does make it that you don't necessarily move forward because when you get together for that four or five hours, you spend so much time trying to figure out where everyone is, that it's tough to feel like when you left, you've accomplished a lot. I, I'm not saying that Sheila's fault and I don't pretend to have the solution to that. That, that's just an honest take as to what's going on in the high school.
That's gonna get better. I mean, you're starting that, but three years from now, you will know where you all are and you will be pushing that work forward. You have to start somewhere.
Yeah, but there's still not, I don't see the solution to the common planning time for high school. But I agree with you as far as group discussions.
There is common planning time in the middle school, but not the high school.
There is, yeah.
It is their prep time, however. It is not a separate common plan period that you're paying an extra period for. This is their prep time and teachers choose because their schedule is such that they're all.
But is that in the, like, there's a set amount of like hours for, for prep?
Yeah, so we, we have, we have one period, there's a five period day. We have one period where we're prepping. Um, and I can attest, we've never had an argument in the middle school about what a prep is because everyone is doing what you would want a prep to be. And that's honestly going to the bathroom, getting a cup of coffee and for fifty straight minutes figuring out how to make your class better with the other person you work with. It's, I wish they had that at the high school. Um, you'd need to hire a lot more teachers to make that happen. It's not something Sheila and Maureen can strategically do. I, I think it's kind of impossible, unfortunately.
Well, you, you can do it. You can do it at the high school by what, as he pointed out, addressing the number of options we provide students with. If you wanna drive to the core only and really not worry too much about music, not worry too much about roxy, not worry too much about anything other than those four core subjects and have a lot more of everybody teaching the same thing, like I teach biology all day and, but, um, Mrs. Burlow teaches biology with me all day and that's all we teach. I don't teach chemistry even though I'm certified in it. So, so that we can, we could do that. But I don't believe it's the high school of the twenty-first century. And so this is one of those things that I think is healthy and good discussion, uh, where there are times we're gonna agree to disagree. Uh, in the end, we work for you. I get that. Uh, my job, however, is to try to convince you of the, of the goodwill, I think, that the administration has in professional development. We have no desire to, to torment teachers. We have no desire to take away from kids. We have the desire instead to put in front of the students the absolute best possible teacher. The research will tell you. A bad teacher, okay, every day, all day is a bad thing. A really fine teacher, taking some professional development time to, to keep that level and that stature is absolutely the best way to educate kids. The research is clear. Uh, Mr. Brophy, you're being very quiet over there. I, I, I know your, your background is certainly similar to ours. Um, but I will whine and complain and fight over this professional development, but, you know, forever until, you know, seventeen months go by and I'm not here to whine and complain about it anymore.
I just wanted to say to Mr. Wiggler, um, great question. Look what it's found. Just making an observation. I just wanna make a quick comment about it. We can talk about professional learning a lot longer in other, in other areas. But we have to look at what, what teaching and learning is about. It is about learning from each other. And that is exactly what the research says. That is what the leadership throughout this country talks about. NEA, AFP, MTA, and all the other, the associations. Teachers don't have enough time with each other. And this district, and I will agree, we still need a survey insofar as the effectiveness of the time. We increased so many days over the past several years. We need to true test that. What is the value added and what does it really mean to me? But districts clamor for time with teachers in their day to be paid to have professional learning. That is huge. Worcester, where twenty-two hundred teachers has two days, that to me is insulting to a profession. When you talk about doctors, lawyers, profession, nobody whines because you looked at the next surgery. When you talk about doctors, lawyers, profession, nobody whines because you looked at the next surgery or you learned the next skill or the next observation and make it better for the students that we have in front of us. So, yes, it's a debate about, leave me alone, the doors are closed. Well, that's not what teaching and learning is. Our doors are open and we learn from each other. So, I know I've been quiet on this, and continuous learning is part and parcel of our profession. And to demean it or demoralize it and say, leave me alone, I don't want it. And lastly, the state, Ed Reform 93 mandated 0-0-0 cost for our teachers to be recertified at 0-0-0 cost. That means 150 PDPs minimal, and offering, if they have multiple licenses, offering other areas. So, yes, this can be great of how we organize it and how we can structure it. And then the learning for children, like you said, might be being lessened. One argument that we had here a few years ago was, was students learning access to teachers on that after-school required day? I still wanna make sure, make sure students do have access to teachers and not because they were doing other projects or learning with, with each other. But the demands of the state has asked us to do more things and put more things on the plate of teachers. More, 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 more. I don't know what they've taken off, Dex, I don't know what they've taken off. And so, I know it's, and I'm sorry, I can get off quick and I apologize, get back there, but we need to talk about more on this and how we do structure it. But oh my gosh, if you're reporting eight days PD for $533,000, thank you. I'm glad we're doing that.
Maureen, speak what you unleashed.
The thing of it is, Evan and I, I'm wrestle over a lot of things all the time. And I believe that we can talk about quality and that's, that's the key. I don't think it's, we wanna make sure, and I know Evan wants to make sure, that the time we spend is time that ends up impacting student achievement. Because it's not about whether the teacher likes it, it's about, does it make a difference for the kids? There are things that I don't like, okay? When I used to be the principal, I didn't like doing lunch duty. I really didn't, if I was good at. Okay, I could get that mean look and for P went across the plate, you know, and I saw it, I was all over. Because my job, okay, was not to have the best 40 minutes of my life, but to make sure that kids understood the proper decorum in the lunchroom. And I know that's simplistic, but that's the same thing. I have an obligation as the teacher to be the best biology teacher, the best chemistry teacher I possibly could be. And we didn't have any professional development in those days. Anything you learned, anything that, you know, I can remember teach, kids coming to me and saying, I don't get this. And I would say, what always worked for me? I would say, listen how stupid this is, study harder. Why? And then I, then I found some kids and I said, Jesus, they're really studying. Uh-oh, I think I have to do something. But I didn't know what to do, so I just started to try different things, totally blind. And that's the way it was when Chu started, when I started. And I would just be thrilled to have the opportunity to start again, because I just see the work our teachers doing, it's amazing.
I just want to touch on something Mark said that I kind of forgot about is, is Wednesday's the best day. That's when our kids have access to the late bus and the teachers after school. You know, I mean, can you ask teachers to stay late another day and, you know, and the professional development?
We don't have to negotiate that, would be a change in working conditions.
We are asking a ton of our teachers.
I fear, I fear that what happens is this becomes black and white. I think you're operating from the assumption that all PD is amazing, and Sheila's not perfect, and she's probably picked some that aren't perfect. And respectfully, I think you painted as any pushback that teachers give were whiners. It's the way it's said, and that's, that's not the way it is. Some, some of the best teachers, I would say, can look at PD and sometimes say, wow, that was really good today. And the next time say, oh my God, that was awful and a waste of my time. And you can't think that all the PD anywhere in the world, this isn't a Quabon issue, is gonna be authentic. You do the best you can to select it. We have limited resources, which is one of the reasons why I think they should know there's not been a lot of outside consultants in the high school. Greg could speak to that. It's been very self-driven and there's positives to that, and there's negatives to that. So, I'm done, we can keep arguing with the next 17 months.
I take umbrage in your comment that I in any way implied, and if you interpret it that way, your problem, not mine, the teachers were whiners.
Well, that, I think it would've been very easy for someone to take what you said and take it that way. So that's why I'm glad you clarified that's not your deal.
You and I will argue about that, add infinitum to your.
All right.
Well, I don't even think I want to go to the next one.
Go to the next one.
It's about the money. It's about the money.
The state average for what we do in professional development and compared, I mean, what's the difference between the 1, 1 million something? And what, what we would pay if you did the state average?
Well, you can look at it with just these numbers alone, because this is per pupil.
Well, yeah, per pupil, but what if you added, what's, what would the bottom line be?
If we did what?
If you took that 197, multiplied it by all our students, I guess that's how you hit the number.
Go back to the previous slide, huh?
For the last one.
You just take the 500,000.
55% of that.
Yeah.
What would that number be?
Not by one, not by the data I have right here, I'd have to go back.
I'm starting to figure out how much.
I need to know the number of students.
How much more we're paying than the state average?
So the difference between.
Total, total, not so much per pupil, but.
I, I don't have my reports that I can draw, I need to know the number of students in each.
The total would be about 650,000. It would be about 615,000. If you go to our full, 1 million, whatever it is.
I, I bet you it's 640,000.
It's not, it's not that easy, because those are different. State does not use.
And then plus they're not gonna find the CAs in New York. It's a different thing, part days.
They don't count how the district students, that number, if they're sitting here because they're professional.
Does anyone want to go to the next one, Maureen?
Sure.
Okay, so the same, same route, looking at administrative costs. The state average for FY15 for administration, and everybody thinks that administration means administrators, it does not. But the state average was $531 per pupil and ours was 582, and you can see how the four districts around us were for FY15. Narragansett being the highest is 613, that's odd to me.
How does it then what you said is so much lower than us?
I'm getting, I'm getting to that.
7,000.
Taking my thunder away. All right, so, so again, administration does not equal administrators. Administration means all of these function codes that you see on our budget reports. So, it's, it's the salaries in these line items, as well as all of the expenses in those offices are totaled up and divided by the number of students that are sitting in your district in FY15. But, these positions are not necessarily tied to student enrollment, as teachers usually are. You have X number of students, so you need X number of teachers. Well, there usually is only one superintendent. There may or may not be an assistant superintendent. They may or may not be a business manager. Not all districts have business managers. They all have special ed directors. They may or may not have human resources. So when you say what if, some districts, and I don't know what the four districts around us have, if I, unless I spent time looking at their websites, I guess, to see what their, what their, if you would contact us, who they are. But if you don't have all of those positions, then you're not gonna spend the same number, the same number of dollars per pupil on them. Or what if you did have all of those positions? We have basically the same administrative structure as Waukesha does, but we have 2,445. Their salaries are not necessarily any higher for these types of positions in that district than they are in our district. But if you divide our totals by our students of 2,445, and you divide that same salaries number by 7,000 students, that's where you get the difference in per pupil amounts. So, the superintendent here can make exactly the same amount of money as the superintendent in Waukesha, but if you divide by 2,000 students or 7,000 students, that dollar per pupil is significantly different. That's why. They have economies of scale in those areas that we don't. And that's why it's interesting to me that Narragansett, because they're much smaller than us, is $613 in these areas. No, because, no, because they don't, they don't have a business manager, correct?
I really don't know.
Or they didn't back in 2015, because the superintendent and the business manager were the same person.
That's right, that's right.
And did they have an assistant superintendent?
Yes, they, well, they have, they have director.
So again, so again, when you're looking at data, that's per pupil data, you need to know what's going into that and for each of the districts that you're talking about. Because it's not as black and white as the state would like you to think. So, that's where I am, and I think that's the last of it.
Well, if we could just get to the bottom line, but this, preliminary, preliminary, obviously, we did, as you requested, the chair of the subcommittee requested. We are not confident that we have the, all of the correct information where we could calculate an assessment. So I know all of you wanna say, well, what does this mean to the town? We won't know that until we are really able to make a couple calls to DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to make sure we have minimum local contributions are correct, and we can, we can then, you know, at our next meeting, probably in February 9th, have a conversation. Yes. To have a.
I thought it was the 2nd, huh?
No, it's the 9th. And so, and if we can, we can look at, you know, what is the impact on, what would be the impact on town assessment? I hope that we'll have enough clarity from the state that we'll be able to do that. I don't know, Cheryl, we'll have to see if it all turns out that way. But at any rate, I, I think she does have here the, the chart of accounts that we would be looking at, including some of the capital. We can take out some of the capital, we can just look at the operational budget. We hope you don't go and cut all of the capital out, but we, we now can begin to have our conversations with member towns, you know, very preliminarily. Usually, we have Claire from Public, from Ocam here. She's not here tonight, I'm surprised, because she never misses a budget meeting. I'm sorry the press isn't here, so that, above the fold in the Barry Zet, they could say Quabon comes soon with 1.8, 1.3% increase in its budget. I think the towns would be applauding. But understand, when there's no help from the state, any increase, any increase goes across the table to the communities. There's just no way around it.
You could craft a press release for Eleanor.
I could.
You could. And it, and it, at the same, at the same time, I think this is an excellent start. I mean, it's, it's a very good faith, it's a good faith effort, showing the towns that we do understand a little bit of their pain and how we're a significant portion of their budget, and we're trying not to go over the top, and rather than coming in with something at 9, 10%, and then going, you know, what did it take, you know? So I, I think it's, you know, it's a good start, it's, it's fine too.
Well, and I'd be happy to craft something for the Barry Zet, and hopefully Eleanor would be amenable. I think if I get it there by Monday in the morning, I think she can run it in the next, in the next iteration. I could also put together just an email that we can forward to the town with a discussion of our preliminary budget to the selectmen, so they have that for their Monday night meetings, to know this preliminary, that the school committee has a lot more work to do on this, and you continue to work, you know, because we have negotiations to do and yada yada.
Well, it's only a minute.
I was just gonna say, Ocam's actually starting to have conversations about it. They.
I saw that in the paper.
They invited us to their meeting that time, so.
They didn't invite me, I was feeling a little badly, but I'm over it now.
Well, I, I couldn't get over the ice and the snow in my driveway, so I didn't go, but.
Well, Mr. Nutter did, he did send me a great little summary of what the discussion was about.
Yeah, so, so an email would be great.
So say, Mark, you know, I know you kind of talked to us about that and being realistic and take a different kind of approach, similar approach.
Is that Mark talking? It's, it's the folks out there talking in the community.
No, 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 as the chair of the budget subcommittee, you were asking the charge, you asked the administration and us to kind of look at other perspectives of the budget, kind of do a perspective. Starting out, preliminary, starting off these discussions, and as we had a lengthy discussion on PD and other things this evening, 2.8% is the ceiling, is what you were early, early throwing out. Can you give us a timeline, Cheryl, in regards to where we're at with the superintendent? Where we're at in regards to next steps, including Colin's perspective, as well as the House budget and et cetera? So we can.
If I were that prescient, I'd be worth more money. I really don't know what the Collins Center is, they.
What's the date, what's the meeting for that?
The next, the meeting was supposed to be on the 24th, but due to weather conditions in their travels, we're moving it to what, what's that day?
The 1st.
The 1st of February.
Yeah.
So we should have a good inkling of what they're gonna blow out. We also, as far as what the House is going to do versus what the Senate's going to do, the governor's numbers are usually the worst, usually.
That's what.
And usually we get a little more in transportation, which is helpful. And it's, it's very difficult to know. And that's why if we, if we do an assessment number, it's based only on the very preliminary information we have from the governor. We don't know exactly. We, we couldn't find the calculations for minimum local contribution. And until Cheryl can get a look at those and feel comfortable that she understands what are they doing this year, I, I think we're not prepared to give you an assessment guess, because we just don't know, based on the governor's number.
I will never give an assessment guess.
Yeah, thank you, Cheryl, never give you an assessment guess. That being said, I, I would, I would tell you, Mark, that we'll go to, I would suspect we will go to public hearing with pretty much the operational budget 1.3, with the, with the capital on the side, talking with the towns, hopefully, that they will see that, you know, that we should do some of that capital. And then I think when they see numbers, they'll be able to help us know how much capital we can push in, my guess.
I'd like to point some things out on here, because I don't want people to go away saying, if you can do this one year, you can do it in the next year. So you, really, you can take some time to look at this. We were able to come in at 1.3% because we've got $288,000 in reduced special ed costs, of which 243 are tuition placements. That could change tomorrow.
I know, I know.
So that's, that's a big number right there. $97,000 in instructional support and special education, that's contract services and some technology that we don't need for certain students. But just right there alone is $288,000. Then you look down here, debt, $90,000 of debt that we don't have is being put in the classroom. So that's, that's not gonna happen again. And up here, benefits, that's basically the unemployment that we had for this year, looking at we're not.
Because this building's paid off, right?
Yeah, this building's now paid off, yeah. That's why that's, that's down there, because there's no payment next year for this building. And here, benefits at 110, which is $86,000 of unemployment that we had for this year, that we're not projecting to use. These are fixed costs, that, that's a one-time reduction. So please don't think that next year we can come back with another 1.3 and be okay.
I think it's important that the towns understand that, so maybe we can highlight that in the email that we sent.
Well, I think I gotta start with the good news. And then we talk about, you know, that we can't do this every year.
We can bring that up again. But I need the committee to understand.
How we got to it.
Yeah.
And then a reality too, is that our contracts are up, and we work with our unions and our employees, and we value our employees and where we can and make the adjustments and appropriately do so, we do. We have a district for years recognizing and valuing our employees. So that's another thing, over the years, is people have recognized, and things have become tough, people have worked with us, and we have not been crazy in our spending. That special ed line piece, thank you, because that one would've killed us last year.
Yeah, but that can change tomorrow.
That could change, we, we understand that.
Whatever, Cheryl, can I just have a moment?
Yeah, you can.
But at least we, we all knew the reality of 1.5 million last year, and that's where we didn't want to see that again. So that is good work for the people that run the district.
Hopefully, we can keep up with that regular tuition line, which is choice and charter. We do see less students this year than we had last year out, and hopefully that can go in the other way when we start taking surveys and whatever.
The charter's gonna sell us.
Yeah, but for the most part, those are fixed cost reductions we're not gonna see again next year, most likely.
Those are.
You do extend the decline in enrollment, and perhaps, you know, that might play.
Hey, get those buildings closed and I'll be happy as a clam, because we're putting money where we shouldn't be spending money. That heat line would drop down, those maintenance costs would drop down. Electricity costs would go down.
Aside from that comment, Mr. Wiglin, that she just said about buildings, perspective, things like that, also, is the administration looking at restructuring for next year? also, is the administration looking at restructuring for next year in any way in regards maybe to 7 through 12?
Why would we do that?
Perspective, maybe, are we looking at any grade configuration? Are we doing any of those earlier discussions we had a year ago?
Well, we have not had any of those, any of those discussions. We're obviously interested in what Collins' report is going to say.
Okay, Collins, what?
And then obviously, we all, we will continue to, you know, have conversations. It's not going to help us to move the sixth grade to the middle school, because all of you are sending schools more at the elementary school, so... You know, there's, I wish I could find somebody who wants to rent a whole school for a month, that'd be great. We do have some interest from Devro to work perhaps with some of our open space, but that's the student population that we would have to work to make certain we could, we could house properly.
Yes, Devro's, is it acquired?
Yes. Now, and I think that's very preliminary, you don't know their exact needs, and you don't know if they could meet those needs. Flack Collaborative, I was there this morning at a meeting, they are seeking space, but we are just, we are outside of their catchment area. We have a great, we have some great programs.
Okay, Cheryl, Cheryl, are you done?
I'm done.
All right, so we have four conversations going on.
Okay, sorry, let's get back to work.
Four coaching conversations, and... So just to make sure everybody understands, the Collins Center's not coming in on February 1st and doing a whole presentation. The subcommittee is meeting with them, just to lay up, I guess, get some more groundwork as to what's going on, so it's not like we're having a big meeting.
Right.
Right, and they may send up, and then based on that, they may set a date and say, okay, we're going to have a full, full meeting on the, whenever.
So it's just the people that were on the...
Yes.
Okay, so now we're going back to the subcommittee reports for a start, unless, do you have anything else for, I mean, it was kind of a budget subcommittee.
I guess we wanted to have some meetings as soon as we...
Well, February 9th, we'll be able to, you know, give you potentially the assess, impact on assessments, you know, understanding that local members from the governor are very preliminary. It's his first day at the budget, and then we'll go to the House, so it'll be differently if they go, and they can be...
So it's what we want to be, the subcommittee just to send out the type of dates.
What we tried to do is to have the subcommittee, the budget subcommittee, meet, okay, and come in with the subcommittee, because it's really hard for, for the subcommittee to bring back all of this, the detail to the full committee, so we thought that if you could run the, sort of, the full committee meetings for a portion of the meeting, and so we'll call it a full committee meeting, and then we'll...
Sure. All right, admin review?
Not, nothing, it's done.
Audit?
What's that?
Okay, budget, are we good? Okay, good for now. Central office?
We'll start working on the strategic plan, once we hear a little more information, we'll start rolling out on that and moving that forward on this.
All right, so no, no date set up or anything?
No date, waiting still for the Collins kind of outlines.
Okay, collective bargaining?
Starting to go back soon, in a couple of weeks, we'll be meeting, starting negotiations with the teachers.
Okay, elementary school?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. Plant facilities?
Just that we had a meeting, we came up, we recommend going with the capital improvements. And speaking as a member of this long-term committee, the reason I sleep good at night is because Cheryl worries and follows the rules. It's big.
So she doesn't sleep good at night, so...
I do not.
That's why.
So yet in the end, and I will point out that we do have, the scoreboard is up in the middle school. And I hear now that the high school guys want to play up there because it's such a beautiful scoreboard. Good job, Claire, thank you. Policy review and reform is...
No, nobody.
Nobody, okay.
We had an event for the other last night, but Michael...
He didn't show up, so... Special ed?
We met tonight, enrollments are pretty much status quo, we can take one year there. The mid-cycle review, the Department of Ed is going to visit OCAM and the high school February 28th to go over those couple of issues that we have, that they should be all squared away. Still waiting on that independent program evaluation that we set money aside for, but we talked about that earlier, and nothing has been decided about that. And hoping that the preschool evaluation can maybe be picked up in that, which would save some money instead.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. Task force, of course, please.
We had the Collins people out about two weeks ago, there were about 100 people there in the audience. I saw officials from the various towns there. They reported on two of the three areas that they said they were going to report on, and the first area, if I have it right, was primarily the financial end of it, the numbers end of it, the demographics, the tax valuation, the percentage that the towns spend on education, the various towns. And we saw Cheryl kind of dissect some of the other information that was put forth that night that was remarkable at the time, and apparently a little misleading, not intentionally, but in terms of the administrative costs, the professional development costs, and so forth. The, what I thought was interesting was we got that, but then, I forget his last name, but Michael got up to talk about another area, and it was a structure around how to make decisions that I found particularly interesting. He got, I couldn't get a handle on it at the beginning, but after a while, I finally figured out, okay, he's got some kind of structure there where he's going to help us make a pretty sophisticated structure, because I couldn't get it, but to help make decisions and choices and so forth. So I was anxious, I'm anxious to see where that goes, because I think that that, out of all that, is going to be the most helpful part in moving us forward.
And he is very, I had a conversation with him post-meeting, and he's very amenable to assisting us in our strategic planning, because he will know the district so well, so he, I couldn't agree with you more about the fact that he looks like someone who could really be an asset to us in our work.
I thought the Barry Gazette article was dead on, and I really liked the fact that Eleanor quoted the, quoted right from the regional agreement in terms of what happens when, because I think it's going to allay a lot of fears. In conjunction with that, Jeff, Walter and I toured Hyrick Elementary, just to tour it yesterday, and this is just an editorial aside, it was a half-day, but you couldn't tell it by the kids, because no matter what class we went into, they were engaged, the teachers were engaged, they were focused, nobody was looking at the clock. So in terms of a PD day for the adults, those kids were dead-on engaged, no matter where we went, we went through the whole building. I forgot my whole point, but I got caught up in that. We got some interesting, we got an interesting perspective on the space in there, as it's being used, and Maureen's dead on about the fact that it's, it's... There are rooms that are being used, but my sense is, is that it's going to, a town meeting vote to close these schools is going to be very difficult, if not impossible. That being said, then I think everybody needs to start working together in terms of what are we going to do? And I think that we had a meeting in December up in Hubbardston to discuss the use of space up there, and really, I don't think anything came of it. But I was really encouraged by the fact that the town officials and the school officials were getting together to discuss the issue now, and not when the budget's, budget's been completed, and the town meetings are right up there, and there's solid animosity, so that was a really good thing. The next step is the next Wednesday, whatever the first is, Collins people are coming on it from 10 to 12 here to have a discussion with a limited number of people, apparently, I have been, and from there, it will be the next step, as far as when they're coming back.
Well, then they will be coming back to the whole group.
And is that going to be their final presentation when they come back?
I believe it is, and they will have some, what they call not recommendations, options.
Options.
The thing that, just to add to that, the use of the Hubbardston school, I did send a letter to the selectmen, as well as to the Hubbardston members, that it would be my recommendation that we leave Hubbardston Center School with the rented space as is for this year. Obviously, the CAPS Collaborative is eager to, you know, enter into a one-year agreement with us. I have not heard back from the selectmen, yay or nay, it's really not a yay or nay from the selectmen, it's really a decision that would be made by this committee, and I would ask you on February 9th to take a formal vote on that, as you would think about that, if you have questions or concerns, and you would like to chat with me or chat with Hubbardston folks, we need to make a decision, one way or the other.
Can you say for the year, you're talking about the year beginning July 1?
Yes, for the next, for the next disco. Because they have to find other space, and we have to find 40,000.
You're going to broach the Brussels Lane deal or...
Well, I have, and I would suspect that with some arm twisting over time, we may see that happen. Their issue is access to a hospital, and how quickly they could get there through the, you know, the, the level of need of some of the students who are in that program. I'm convinced that that's kind of a red herring, because, I mean, you can get there pretty fast from there as well, but, and as far as the location of, you know, the ambulance to the school, in both cases, it's very close, but that is an issue that they talk a lot about. I don't think they have another option, it is probably as nice or as good as we have. I know that Hubbardston does not want to, from a school perspective, we don't want to lose that program, it's a great thing for our kids. But obviously, I need to give them as much lead time as possible if the committee's decision is not to continue to rent for them for one more year.
So is that pushed back from the selectmen?
Not a word, I didn't hear one thing.
And you said it's a $40,000 rental fee that we get, yes, and we actually use it to the cost of a custodian.
But I mean, I have not heard one thing back from them to say, no, we don't want to do it, or yes, Maureen, that's okay. I mean, technically, it is the school committee's decision, because we have not given up the building, or portions of the building. And what I worry about, and I put in my letter, is I worry about the fact that if we're going to share space, we, I think the Department of Ed has to know about that, so we do have to have a conversation with the Department of Ed to make sure there's no kind of crazy regulation. But we have some considerable work to work on our egresses, and to create some platforms, and be able to lock off the school part from the in and out, from people paying taxes and so forth. So I'm not saying it will happen in the future, but I just really need to work with CAPS Collaborative, of which we're a member, to say, you got to move, and you've got six months to do it, or you got to move probably, and you've got 18 months to do it. But I continue to try to talk with them about Barry, I encourage them to come and look at the space there. I have not had any takers from CAPS yet to do that, but, so that's where we are. But I'd like to have a vote, if it's one way or the other, because CAPS has got to make decisions about where that population will be housed next year, if it's not going to be Hubbardston.
I think you're a bigger picture, though, down the road. Within, by a year from now, hopefully, we can have some kind of policy on alternative uses of space, because it's going to come up in the Collins Center, even whether or not they'll probably want to put it here. You know, you're going to have these buildings, like, 60% vacant, scattered throughout the district, and, you know, it's only, you know, it's only judicious that we actually do something about it and try and, you know, and overcome the barriers. And I'm sure that, you know, DESE or whomever it is, that we need to inform, has probably engaged in some discussion somewhere in the state already about this topic, and we need to piggyback on it and tell them that, you know, we're trying to develop a policy, so they have some insight, whatever.
Well, we were going through the school in Hardwick, and Joanne brought us down to the old kindergarten classrooms, two kindergarten classrooms, and it was kind of like, it was even a better arrangement than the arrangement that we were looking at in Hubbardston in terms of being able to have two separate accesses, to be able to have fire doors that close, and maybe have, you know, I mean, if you just, in a separate place to commit a separate entrance, and so, yeah, that would be a good idea if we can stop looking at...
And I think another thing you have to be concerned about, and you have to think about in the future, is the fact that preschools are going to be a reality, okay? They will, in our common law, probably before some other places. And we need to ensure that we tease out enough space, so if that comes to pass, we have at least a classroom or two in our schools, because I would suspect that there's going to be grants and opportunities to get our hands on some, and by that, increasing our Chapter 70 allotment, because we'll have more kids. But I would say that preschools in our school district are going to come, and if we, you know, take away all of our space with shared space, we, I think we should save some costs, because I think within the next five years, we will, I hope we will, in our, in our, in our country, see preschools. It's probably the best investment we can make. So I would just say, you know, go talk with Collins about that on Wednesday as well, because I would hate to be shortsighted and make the town happy at the expense of a future of our children. I've never been accused of that, however.
Good, okay, and you're going to have, we're going to have a CAPS thing, Maureen, on next month.
Yes, so if in Hubbardston, you can kind of move around, because I haven't said one thing to me, I can say something to Rhianne. Rhianne, where are we with this, because technically, I mean, I don't want to just shun them, but I would like to have one more year with that, and otherwise, we have a lot of, we have to, they have to put some money in their budget for us to repurpose part of this.
There was no real financial gain, and they weren't able to say what they were realizing.
Well, I didn't know that, I don't know, they haven't shared that with me, so I don't know. I just don't want to in any way step on some toes that, you know, that I would need to...
Just one more, probably a footnote to all this, is that something of a minor historical significance is the fact that, after that meeting in Hubbardston that night, I followed Dr. Marshall, Nolan, Paulman, we all know about her lead foot, and I can testify to the fact that she did not exceed 35 miles an hour. Of course, the road was glare ice, but she made a couple of attempts at 40, but it just wasn't going to work.
Technology? Solar retro, Charlie's not here. But Cheryl, can you, I know you've been emailing me, so can you update where we're at with our own solar field, sort of?
Well, we're in a real conundrum right now with National Grid, in that they came out and met with Lee and Charlie and I, and, well, SolarCity came out and met with us and said, absolutely, National Grid was not appropriately crediting us for our solar net metering credits, to the total of $38,000. Then, last week, we got our first new invoices for the month, for the Hardwick comes first before everybody else, and the bill tripled. Now, they owe us a credit of $38,000, and now the other bills have come in for other schools, which are less than triple, but still, they're billing us when they owe us a credit. And National Grid's answer to us was, well, we've canceled those invoices, these are the correct ones. I said, no, 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 you've got my $38,000, you just can't cancel anything, you need to issue me credits that will go against these new bills that you're issuing me. Unfortunately, Miles went out of the country for a week, he's due back tomorrow. Hopefully, we can get this settled, because I have refused to pay National Grid for these new bills, which they then will charge us a finance fee for, even though we sent them the check before the bill was due. Miles was able to give us a credit on that issue, and he said, no, you're not paying any finance charges, because they owe us 38 grand. So this has not been an easy process for them. I hope our district does not go forward with us as being a host customer again, because this has just been a disaster from us since the minute we connected. Look at other options or whatever, but, or at least not be the host customer, because we seem to be getting the short end right now.
My husband's upbeat, how about you, business?
Unfinished business? Nothing. Public comment, we have nothing listed, but I see...
So I attended the Collins meeting two weeks ago, and...
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Michelle, I'm from Hardwick.
Could you just speak a little louder?
So when I attended, when I attended the meeting with the Collins Center two weeks ago, I had brought up the question of, will Collins look at Westbrook Field and Northbrook Field as options to, if we're going to restructure the whole district, why not look at everything, was basically my question. And had anybody gone and asked those towns, some of them have task force, have we reached out to them? Will there be an outreach to those towns? I'm just curious if we're going to change a lot of things, if we're looking to do a lot of restructuring... And I'm just curious if we're going to change a lot of things, if we're looking to do a lot of restructuring, why not?
We have reached out to Northbrook Field on a number of occasions and there's not any particular interest from Northbrook Field. They have established, I think, a regional study committee, but I don't know if they've gone too far with it. Eastbrook Field is trying to extricate itself from Spencer. But in order for them to do that, Spencer has to vote to let them go.
Right. So Eastbrook Field is already kind of, they're attached, I guess, is what we'll call it.
And Westbrook Field is attached to Quavon.
Right. But their elementary school really isn't. So I wasn't really sure.
No, it is. They're a K to twelve district and Quavon has the responsibility and so forth for their elementary K to...
See, I wasn't sure if Warren had their own elementary school.
Well, Warren has its own elementary school and Westbrook Field has one, but they're a K to twelve district like Quavon is.
Okay. All right. So I was looking more at Northbrook Field just because I know a little bit more of their situation. So there was talk of the school needing a new roof also. And there's talk that the trade school is going to put in a hundred and sixty brand-new sinks next year for them. So there's, they've got issues, like, and the Collins Center brought up that their numbers look worse than ours do. So when was the last time that we reached out to Northbrook Field?
Probably two or three months ago.
October.
October.
Okay. Because when I brought it up at the meeting, I was told nine years ago by you, actually.
That was Peter Sham.
That was Peter Sham.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I talked to Northbrook Field this fall. Northbrook Field basically skipped out of the room and said, look, we're going to get this big marijuana thing going. And we're, I'm serious.
Is that the rumor?
They've totally, I guess, gotten some permitting for the old shoe factory on Summer Street, I was told. And that they feel that they will be grossing or netting.
Okay. That's, I just, from what I had been reading and a lot of their reports, and then after what I had been, I just apparently misunderstood the difference between Peter Sham and my question had been about Northbrook Field. So, so none of this necessarily matters.
I wish it would. I mean, I would love it to happen.
But I just want to make a comment, I think, you know, to the chair. I think, you know, your point is well taken. We are receptive to that and we will knock on the door again. We will do that.
We've knocked on their Gensetts door because they're declining, you know, even more than we are. And there's just not any interest there. In fact, they're building this, if you believe this, they've got all of their kids, okay, at the middle school, high school complex. And they've had some schools condemned, some elementary schools, but they're going to build a forty-seven million dollar new elementary school, even though they could fit all of them instead of repurposing their middle school, which is relatively new. So it's a strange world where people are trying to spread out, even though the demographic information we have is just to see this continued decline for at least another ten years.
So the one thing I thought was wonderful about the literature I found about Northbrook Field was that they have established a grant because some of the parents had brought up bringing in a trade and offering that to the students to either try and retain our current students that are kind of scooting out on us or just to kind of have more come in because we have something unique to offer. So they have received a grant to do an engineering trade, which I thought was great. And I don't know if you guys have, I know adding more at this point where we're kind of struggling with what we have may be not realistic, but...
Well, I think there is some, you know, we do have some robotics and some engineering opportunities for our kids now. We do have some biotechnology issues. But I did have a conversation with a connector to the Mount Wachusett to begin to work on a dual enrollment pathway from our high school. And we're going to be meeting with some of the, the new president, Senator Brewer, a former Senator Brewer has set some meetings up for us with the Mount. That could, you know, interest some students. It's very difficult to compete with the sophistication of some of the laboratories that would need to be available to students to compete with some of the bulk schools.
Oh, a hundred percent. I understand that.
So some of the stuff that Northbrook Field may be, you know, attempting to work on is probably similar to stuff that we probably already have. What kids really, you know, there's not enough slots probably in the bulk schools and I wish there could be something we could do, but we don't have access to Perkins money without doing some really, you know, interesting maneuvering. That's, Perkins money is for a vote program, if you need to put a vote program in. Interestingly enough, if you can believe this, I have a parent who's very concerned out of OCAM. He's really concerned because Pathfinder doesn't even offer plumbing anymore. And in order for a student to get plumbing, they have to either go to Bay Path or to Monty Tech, sort of on choice. And they're not going to find a spot at Monty Tech, maybe at Bay Path. Because Paxton and Rutland do not use all of their spots if they, if they get. But anyway, so I've been working with that parent to help them out. That's not good news, however, for OCAM. Because that means if they go to some other bulk school, you may be paying something in addition to. We also have some kids going to the agricultural school. I think three, one from Hardwick, one from OCAM, and two from New Braintree.
Possibly, definitely one from New Braintree, possibly two.
So these are bad, this is bad news for the communities because you know the expense of that. As Barry had a couple of those students. So that's a problem that maybe we can work with Engoli and talk about, can you help us with this? Because those are very expensive placements and nothing we can predict.
To her point, Lee, what do you think? Maybe we can, maybe we should just try again. We did it in October. Why don't we try again and go to the, go to the committee, superintendent and the chair?
Maybe invite them to the Collins report or, I don't know if Collins is even going to encompass them into their report.
Well, they probably won't, but they certainly would not hurt. I would definitely make the overture to the superintendent and if you would like to sign a letter, Lee, to go to the chair. It might be abuse. There's also another...
We've been trying two years to do this.
No, I'm not suggesting that nothing's been done. I've just been curious because I'm new to this. I am a kindergartner, so here I am, kind of trying to play catch-up a little bit here, you know? Now, your list about your maintenance and, you know, the big, you know, the biggie that you were kind of talking about tonight. A lot of the money that we put out towards the trade schools, the trade schools are very willing to do projects in town-associated schools. Do we ever reach out to them?
Yes, you'd say they built our, they built our dugouts and so forth in our community. But see, there's really not a lot of, enough of them to do all the projects that we submit.
Well, no, of course not.
There's different schools that they will spend time at. In other words, Monty Tech might be doing something in Hubbardston and then they might do something in Rubble's Lane and then, but they're spread pretty thin. So they spent a good deal of time working on our dugouts. But we did get, for example, the hundred thousand dollar grant through the life sciences to do our biotechnology program. So there are some grants out there, but they are not as plentiful as they were even five years ago. And so there, it's a struggle to get them. So and Mount Wachusett is interested in, you know, reaching out and working with the high schools. So we're going to try to do that. We do have a lot of sort of standalone interesting programs that I think do attract kids to us and the quality of the product that we produce, I think, attracts kids to us. But as far as believing that we could only through those mechanisms use all the space in our buildings is probably, without sharing it for municipal purposes, is probably unlikely. I just think it's unlikely at town meeting that we are going to get school closures. And so we have to be looking at sharing the space, at repurposing, at trying to do some different things. Because each budget year is a new set of challenges and the schools that provide the community centers for the towns, they're very important places. And we're just concerned that we know the towns have limited capacity to support financially our schools. And when we're spending money on space we're really not using, that really makes it really harder for the community. So we're trying to say, can we, like Mark says, we're going to have to repurpose some of it to maybe share with the communities. Some of the communities, like Barry, they don't need space. They're not looking for us to provide them with space. See, if I said to them, don't you want to come in and use six classrooms at Rubble's Lane? They'd say, for what? We've got plenty of space. Okay, I mean, sorry, Hubbardston on the other hand, OCAM on the other hand, ooh, you guys need really some serious municipal space.
Yeah, fire and spilling the park.
Yeah. Yeah. And so there is another town that maybe we can do some different things with. So hopefully Collins will put some of that on the table and we can work that through.
Thank you.
Hardwick has indicated they need those spaces, though.
And the space wasn't so much, I get that. I sat through the whole meeting where we went through class sizes and what the different schools would look like. If we moved this one, shifted this school here, closed this one, opened that one. I sat through that. So I understand what you're talking about, about class sizes and square footage. And I was talking about just petitioning the trade schools maybe more to help with some of these other projects, some of the simpler ones. That's up. Kind of cut off onto like a space and size and...
Well, see, the problem is they only have so much capacity to go out into the districts to do work.
Don't you say that they need to do a job?
So a lot of the projects that we do on here, the exterior painting, the floor, we do that in-house. We don't contract out with someone to do that. The plant facility staff does a lot of those projects. And we'd still be paying for the supplies that those bulk schools would be doing for those.
Right. But some of them, your maintenance doesn't do.
Right. But the bigger ones, by Chapter thirty B, we're not going to be allowed to use the bulk schools. Something's over in the fifty thousand dollar limit.
That's where my question kind of lied, lies. Are we petitioning the trade schools where we can to kind of cover the cost of what we're paying to put out in what the minimum that we're required to pay? What we have to pay them is...
We petition them for assistance and they look at projects and decide which ones they're going to take. They do so because what they're trying to do is to provide the stus that they're working with opportunities to participate in the trade. They can't do some complex projects. They do the simpler ones. And they only work during the school year. And some projects we can't do in the school year, we have to do in the summer. So sometimes they're, we can't utilize their help. But we petition, but we only get so much of their time. It's because Fitchburg gets most of their time because they're paying the biggest part of the bill. Are you working out a Pathfinder or Bay Path?
My husband teaches at Bay Path and I'm a Pathfinder graduate myself.
Okay. So is Northbrook Field Pathfinder or Bay Path? Bay Path?
Northbrook Field's either, right?
Either or.
Oh, either or? Oh, okay. So Bay Path must be doing the, replacing the sinks because Pathfinder doesn't have the program anymore. Which I'm really surprised at.
My statement, I guess, will be then, I would hope that you would reach out to them as much as you could to kind of cover whatever we can with the money we're putting out and hoping that we're trying to recoup what we're getting out to put back into our...
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have a question real quick. I'm Justin Varan from Hardwick also. And have we looked into opening up any Chapter seventy-four programs and what it would actually take? Because there's lots of Perkins grants and things like that with...
We have. And we have not been eligible for a lot of the big money. And because when you're in direct competition with a bulk school, you're looked at with jaundiced eye if you're trying to replicate what students, what the state feels they're already paying for.
You need to meet the Chapter seventy-four program. I get that, but there's overflow in these schools. Kids are waiting to get into these schools. So there's a market if we can open that.
Well, we agree, but the programs that we're looking at, just the facilities that you would need, we'd have to pick a program that there was overflow. And then we have to create, you know, the classroom space for that. And some of those labs that you guys have are just so amazing.
Some of them are very expensive.
Yes. It's probably like the soft skills, like a web design program shop or something like that.
See, I don't think, is that just a Chapter seventy-four? Because I didn't think that was Chapter seventy-four.
Web design, office occupation, things like that, Chapter seventy-four, over in chess.
Things that you can customize a regular standard classroom for is what we're talking about. Not air handlers and exhaust venting systems and those are just outrageously expensive. Those aren't the kinds of things we're talking about, maybe nursing. You can, granted, some of the equipment for nursing can be costly, but it's a less costly, expensive automotive or carpentry shop or, oh boy, machine shop, for example.
I mean, because in part of that Chapter seventy-four grant work that, you know, we've looked into, what we would have to do is we have to demonstrate need. And so we would have to, the program we would end up choosing would be the one where we could demonstrate need. And obviously, you two seem to be people who I could ask help from and ask about information because I would not know that, oh, yeah, you could do nursing, you don't need much stuff.
Well, I, and that's, that's a very, you know, I'm not saying you don't need a lot of stuff. It's just the cost to start up a program is less than, say, carpentry or a machine shop.
Would you mind making an appointment or, you know, I could either come your way or meet you in Hardwick Elementary or maybe at my office and we could chat more about this?
That would be great.
I'd love to do that. The only, because I'll tell you, there's a lot of, shall we say, competition between folk schools and the academic regions, a lot of competition. And so it's very difficult to get the Perkins money. And they have a new deputy commissioner who is trying to work with, you know, trying to make that all happen. And so we've had conversations with her and, you know, it's a lot, there's a lot of intrigue into trying to get a Chapter seventy-four grant that's sufficient enough to really put into the full-scale programming. But I'd love to chat with you more about what you're knowledgeable, you know, being on the ground, you know, in a school really would help me.
And hopefully some more Chapter seventy-four money can free up so it's not such a monopoly and we have some competition where the comprehensive schools can open these programs.
Boy, I would, but I wish you would go to the state and work there because that's exactly what I would like to see happen. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd be happy to meet you in Hardwick so you didn't have to travel up here and maybe we could chat more about this. Thank you.
Thank you. School committee concerns. I have a couple of things I wanted to know. About three weeks ago, I happened to attend, and there are other people, I sat behind Mrs. Musnicki and her wonderful grandchildren, who are wonderful, an alumni concert put on by Quavon, fiftieth anniversary, both the Worcester Telegram and the Barry Gazette had very big articles on that. What blew me away first, and I knew alumni, I knew a couple of people coming into play who graduated last year, the year after, as I sat there and watched everybody come in, I saw all these people with gray hair and I said, holy crow, what is going on here? So Winslow Sawyer, who fifty years ago, because it was the fiftieth anniversary that was part of Quavon's fiftieth anniversary, fifty years ago started, came in as a twenty-five-year-old, I guess, or something, and kind of started the whole music program for Quavon. He came, he flew up from Florida, is legally blind because he's had diabetes for almost his whole life. He came up, led the band in a song. There were, I believe, sixty-eight-plus alumni who showed up. And when I say all ages, I mean all ages. He was awesome. He spoke very well, spoke very highly of the program, pointed out that when he left some years ago, and I don't know how long ago he left, that there were really, there were ten music teachers at Quavon at the time he left. So once again, very supportive, but it was just awesome to see all these alumni, somebody flew up, a couple of people came up from Maryland, New York, Texas, Georgia. He was from Florida. It was just awesome. They put on a great two-hour program and it was really just great to see. It was very, you know, it was very moving, the whole thing was moving. And Mr. Lewis is the one who coordinates this. This is the fifth one or sixth one, I think he did. But because it was Quavon's fiftieth anniversary, a lot of, a lot of the older crowd came up for it. So that was really great to see.
Yeah. September will be the fiftieth opening of school, September two thousand seventeen.
Another thing is, you know, I've had, it's kind of, it's not a pet peeve because there's nobody to blame on this, but I really wish there were a way, and I've said this throughout my time here, that we could track our students who leave here to see just how well they do. I read articles about how colleges saying, gee, we have to put students into these remediation programs because they don't know English, they don't know math. And I'm always curious, curious is to say, okay, how are our kids doing? And we just don't know. So I get a lot of anecdotal stuff. And so a couple of things I came up with over the last month. You know, two years ago, we had nine students get picked up to go to WPI and one of them transferred out halfway through, or at the semester someplace, to another college. But out of the eight that finished the... But out of the eight that finished their first year, five made deeds lists, which is pretty cool. And out of those five, I know of three who were on varsity sports also at the same time. So, once again, a small sampling, but it's just great to hear that. Over the winter time, being in the gym, we had winter hours, and there were just a plethora of alumni who would come in, do their workouts. We had kids that came in there from WPI, Holy Cross, Naval Academy, Virginia Military Institute, two young ladies who go to school in New Hampshire, I think they said Salem, Salem State in New Hampshire. One of our girls is going, is at the Merchant Marine. So she came in, and in conversations with all of them, because I've picked up conversations with all of them, part of my whole thing was, okay, so how's it going? Did you have to take anything special, you know, because Quabin didn't, you know, you didn't get what you needed from Quabin? All of them said they were doing well. They were just, they were, they loved where they were at. One girl, the girl from Holy Cross, she did, she transferred from Adelphi her first year because she just didn't feel comfortable there, didn't like it, and it's not at Holy Cross. Loves it at Holy Cross. And once again, maybe a number of 10 to a dozen kids, but still just anecdotal information that, you know, these kids are doing well and they're happy with their education. So unfortunately, we can't follow our kids, but just in conversations, you know, it's good to hear that the ones I'm conversing with are doing pretty well, you know. So I'll leave you with that.
Some of our seniors are doing pretty well, too. Debbie could share some, she doesn't wanna share, just because as a parent, but I'm gonna ask you to share that, because he's done.
Okay. And the only, the only other thing I'm gonna, one more thing I'm gonna say, and this is just because I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but I attended a wrestling, I went to the wrestling tournament last night against Algonquin. Algonquin's 20th in the state, and they're a D2 or just a D3. But if we had beaten, if we would beat them, we would be tied in the mid-watch league. And so this year, we have our good wrestlers are like the backend, the heavyweight end. And so we went to them first, and we did well, but a little shaky in the beginning, and that's just where our weak spot is. But so for the 106, which is the lightest wrestler, we pulled up an eighth grader, and we can do that. We have a middle school wrestling team, and we're allowed to do that. First varsity match ever. He goes down there, he's down in points, four to one, and then what he does, he gets a reverse, then he gets a flip, so he has seven points now. He's up on points, and I was saying to my wife, even if he loses, I mean, to be ahead of his match the first time ever wrestling varsity is great. You gotta understand this about wrestlers. It's not like college, it's not like football or basketball where somebody scores a basket and the people are jumping up and down. Our wrestlers are there, and they're sort of tuned in, but you gotta understand, some have wrestled, so they're thinking about what they did. Some still have to wrestle, so their mind is like, okay, what's gonna happen? Two or three are warming up in the background, so they're not even within the group. And here's this little 106-pounder there, and he gets a position where he can pin his kid now. And that is unusual to the point of, okay, I've got somebody better, and I have my shot here, I gotta take it, because 10 seconds later, he could be the one who's pinned. Our wrestlers are like jumping up, I mean, I've never, really, I've done eight years of this, and I've never seen the whole team, he's on the other side of the mat, our wrestlers are on this side, so he's on the Algonquin side. Our wrestlers have their toes right, they can't step on that mat. All 18 of them have their toes right to the edge of that mat. They're screaming, the big crowd is screaming, the kids are trying to push him down, the ref's bouncing around, because he's trying to see the shoulders. Time's going down on the clock, it's like, oh my God. The ref goes down with his hand, he pins him. The plates go, I've never seen a plate go crazy like that in my life.
Six pounds.
He comes back, the coach picks him up by the waist and holds him around, because the coach was like, he jumped as high off the floor as I've ever seen him. Kid's name is Russell. He got more pounding, he probably got hurt more from our wrestlers pounding him on the back from the victory than he did out on the mat. I've never seen such an emotional wrestling match in my life. And probably because of him, the 113th pounder, who was in his first year, never wrestled before, but he wrestled a couple of varsity matches, I've seen him, he goes, oh, pins his kid in 40 seconds, and then it's like, we need one more pin to win, because we still have kind of our weak area coming down. Connor Thompson comes up, and the question is, isn't if he's gonna pin somebody, it's when he's gonna pin somebody.
Absolutely.
Took him all the 22 seconds to do that. And so it was like, the crowd was so into this, it was like just the greatest, but for that 106-pounder to do what he did, I mean, the first match ever...
But we beat Algonquin.
Yeah. 42 to 36, we beat him by six points. So it was great. It was just, it was a tremendous match. So just those little vignettes of, you know, I mean, he was, I spoke with one of the teachers when I was at the debut today, and she said, I told her about, she said, "You know what? He was, he had a bounce in his step today at school, and I was wondering what was going on." He didn't say anything, but I said, "That's why he had that bounce in his step." So that was pretty awesome. All right.
Okay, Depp, would you share with us, the information that I know, well, it's such a wonderful, okay, comment on the quality of the work that our teachers do, as well as the quality of the work that our kids do. Would you like to share?
Absolutely. In December, my son received his congressional nomination to apply to the Naval Academy, West Point, Merchant Marines, and Air Force Academy. And Jack Muir, also.
All right.
And they would follow in the steps of, we have a woman at the Naval Academy now who's in her sophomore year, I believe.
Yep.
And...
That's his number one choice, so we'll see, we'll see.
And, and, you know, the young woman who went off from Quabin has done extremely well. So we're very proud.
Very proud. It does, I mean, they wouldn't be prepared to apply to this school.
Congratulations to you, too, Mom.
Well, thank you. He actually received it, I think we got snow or something, his birthday was December 17th, which was a Saturday, and he got it the following Monday. But I think we didn't get mail that day. He wanted to have it on his birthday, but.
Great.
One thing off the list.
We have one new business thing, which is request for some field trips, overnight yearbook field trip, and a request for the German student athlete exchange in April.
So moved with the proper provisos?
I think you've seen it in the seat.
I've just one seat over. So moved with the proper provisos and requisites for the legal piece for travel?
Exactly. So, just a couple of questions. Number one, for how many kids are we talking for the yearbook work?
Yearbook, we're looking for two or three kids that would go.
Okay.
At the expense of the yearbook company.
Okay, and that's just one overnight or a week?
One overnight.
Okay. And for the German, I know that's, it says here, April 2018.
Well, what it is, is the German, the gentleman from the school came to see me about a month and a half ago, a month ago. They would look for the German students to come here in December, and for our students to potentially go there in April, in 2018.
Okay, my understanding is the December part is a little, would be a little difficult for us, right? Because are they, they're gonna, this is a whole basketball thing, so aren't the German kids gonna wanna play basketball?
They, this year, they came in December, and this is a program where they were looking for an alternative year to this year. Every other year, they go to Lincoln Sudbury, and they're looking to do something in an alternative year from Lincoln Sudbury, so they like to come to Quabin in one year, Lincoln Sudbury the next year. And this year, they came in December and were able to attend both cultural events and athletic events. They want to come in December because they wanted to go see the Celtics or go to a college basketball game. So they don't, it doesn't interfere with, it didn't interfere with Lincoln Sudbury's basketball program.
Okay.
You know, they really, the kids were able to go do these things kind of, not on their own, but with, you know, their adult supervision, then they were able to stay with the kids at Lincoln Sudbury.
Okay, and our kids would go for the vacation week in April?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comment? Motion?
I moved it.
Okay, did I hit the second?
Second.